Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 24th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kelo has our dog today.
Our featured dog this week is a male Akita, German Shepherd mix. He was brought in this weekend from Alariah. He's got a great temperament. He's about two years old, a little bit on the thin side, just needs some fattening up. He'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock. If he's not your type of dog, we have plenty more, I'm sure, Jack, stop by our dog kennel.
9:45, we're going to have Bob Rees.
I hope so, yes.
10 o'clock will be the Sheriff's Budget under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry, I'll approve everything except 9 of 13, which was the account transfer of $10,000 from Mark Stewart.
We're on appropriations.
I'm sorry?
That's a true.
I thought you said it.
No, we're on appropriations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Next one.
So you're okay for appropriations?
Yes.
Okay. Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, 9 of 13, transfers. Mark Stewart just put for future investments. Not enough detail for me to approve that.
Can I see that?
Mr. Snodgrass?
I don't remember anything with future investments.
Future expenses.
Oh, capital improvements.
True.
Capital improvements. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, it kind of goes into requisitions where they actually did $6,000 for carpet replacement. I think at this time, carpet better be in pretty bad shape in order to do replacement on it.
Here comes Craig, maybe he can shed some light on this for us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm not intimately involved with the details of this, but we are going through a remodel process of the Tax Map Office. And I believe that's what the transfer was there for. Right now, as we acquired or actually brought that into the Auditor's Office a couple of years ago, we found that there were a lot of inefficiencies as far as the design and the makeup of that office. And again, when you do merge two departments, you are going to have some change. So now, after having it for more than a year, I believe that these remodeling, it's necessary actually to serve the public better. We are using, I believe, real estate assessment funds. It's not general fund money, and this will actually improve the office and the efficiencies.
As far as what percent? What type of return on investment are you going to get from this?
I don't think there was an ROI done on this. Again, it is, right now, it's very disjointed. You have walls up between employees. People come into the office, you can't see where the other employees, you can't see people coming into the office. Again, these serve the title companies, the surveyors, and the general public that comes in and needs to do transfers or deep prep work.
Let me interrupt there, Craig. Just so Tom was in here, a couple of years ago, Tax Map was under the County Engineers' Office, and it was approximately a quarter of a million dollar a year general fund expenditure through an agreement with the engineer and the county auditor. The county auditor absorbed that department, taking the quarter of a million dollars off of-
The general fund.
-our general fund-
Yes.
-and putting it on the real estate thing, but they had to combine two offices. So it sounds like this was sort of the merge, like what we're going through at 911 and the Sheriff's Dispatch. There had to be a remodeling to bring the two units together.
Right, and for at least the past year or so, we've kind of really get a workflow to see how things really come together. And I think now we've been able to make a, you know, an informed decision on how this office should be set up and how it can be run more efficiently. And that's part of this process.
Okay. Yeah, if you can just, when you put in requests like this, actually put more detail instead of just capital improvement. It's hard to sign off on stuff.
I didn't prepare this one, but I'll let them know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
In advance, as our committee requisitions-
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. I am in receipt of a potentially completed bargaining agreement with the operating engineers from the Baskiel Bridge that we may want to talk about. Also, I need to talk with you about the completed labor agreement with United Steel Workers of America for our 911 employees, potential sale of real estate. Both of those topics are allowable for executive session under Sunshine Law, so I'd ask this conclusion of our regular board meeting today. We go into the executive session and have those talks. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the same County Commissioners' meeting minutes of August 17, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Creative Fund for the Transportation Community Center, this is for all activity of payments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under community development, award contract to Kelly Heating and Air Conditioning Inc. Lorain in the amount of $2,300, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Alice Schroeder at 232 West Ridge Road, Alariah Township, for grant assistance on a furnace replacement. Twenty-three invitations were sent or received, this being the most responsive complying specifications, and will be paid from the CHIP FY10 home repair account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you, is this the one that you wanted to speak on?
Yeah, if I could.
Do you want to come up over here?
How are you doing?
Morning, Joe.
Let everybody know who you are.
Joe Thayer, 4667, Crossing Trail, Lorraine, Ohio. On this, I noticed on the agenda last night when I was looking that you're going to potentially award a contract to Kelly Heating and Air Conditioning for this furnace project. And this is going to come out of the CHIP fiscal year 2010 money. Twenty-three invitations were sent, four received. What dictates who you send those invitations to? How does that work? I did speak with Mr. Romancheck prior to the meeting. I understand there's a list, but is that 23, all 23 on the list? You know, what, how do you get on that list? How does that happen? What dictates who the invites go to? I guess would be my first question.
We're going to have Mr. Romancheck.
You want to have two or three at a time for him to answer? You want to do them one at a time, Joe?
Well, let's do one at a time.
That's fine.
You can, maybe you can come on this side?
Okay.
It'll be easier. There we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The community development annually holds a open house for contractors where we go over the program and explain the requirements, and the contractors fill out an application to be included upon the list. In addition, throughout the year, we will always take an application. So anyone who is ever interested in bidding on our jobs, all they have to do is contact us, and we will send them the paperwork. We'll go over it with them one-on-one so that they can also participate. We're always looking to increase the number of people potentially to bid, and this has been a more cost-effective way than advertising in the paper on a regular basis.
Good. Does that answer your question fully?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Romancheck.
Okay. Stay there just in case, we need you again.
And in the process of getting these contractors, is there any research done? What is, what's determined, or how is it determined, that they are responsible contractors and don't have any previous or pending issues that would make them non-responsible?
Mr. Romancheck?
There, we look to make sure that they're licensed and bonded with the appropriate building department for where the work is to be done. And they need, if they are not, they need to get it, get those, that paperwork in order with the correct jurisdiction. In addition to that, we do, are required to review and see whether or not they're on the debarment list with the state of Ohio and the federal government. But that's the extent of it there.
Okay. I'll get to my point on that in a second. But yeah, looking at it as we do with other projects in the county and the bigger cities in the county, looking at previous projects, track records, references, pending or past litigation, again, track record of issues, wage and labor law violations, and workers' comp coverage to make sure the employees are working and protected in the event they get hurt. You know, and in this, again, potential award to Kelly Heating and Air Conditioning, $2,300. Looking at it, it says includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders. What determines whether we're going to have, I mean, what, I guess there's-
We always have that in the language, always.
Okay, because I know there's going to be X amount for the project itself.
Like a 10%? It's 10% automatic.
Okay. Has Kelly done work in the past and had change orders where there may be a-
Let me speak to that contingency for a moment. I agree with you. We're very, very, I don't want to, you said it was automatic, and I want to make sure that the public understands that we're very diligent about scrutinizing change orders. The only reason we add a bit of a contingency is sometimes there's a minor change, and it may be for a couple of dollars, but then we would have to redo the paperwork, send it all through again. It costs us more money to redo all the paperwork to do a change order for $15 than it's worth. But we do not, as a general rule, use the contingency dollars.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mean that we always gave them the 10%, but we always put that language in there to cover any unforeseen change.
As you know, from our work on the Justice Center and other big projects, we're pretty, we're pretty hard on change orders. It really has to be something that's totally unforeseen and unpredictable before we allow anybody to get into a change order status.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, looking at a house project, I can't imagine that there's going to be any major surprises. Not to say there wouldn't be, but-
Nor could I, but we do that so that we actually decrease our internal administrative burden and cost a little bit, so that we don't have to come back and redo all the paperwork for what would be a minor change. But I'm going to be pretty fairly comfortable saying that we do not allow people to puff up their prices with living in the change order area.
Fair enough.
The, you know, you may be able to help us. We're having a problem getting people to come out and quote these jobs.
That's been our largest problem over the years.
The, we'll send out 11, 12, 13 invitations to folks.
And get two bids.
We get two people that come out. I'm really surprised. You know, part of the problem is they don't want to conform to all the requirements that we have under these federal guidelines, so it makes it difficult for them.
Right.
The, but if you guys could come up with a procedure or methodology that we could use to help us get more quotes, we certainly would encourage that kind of partnership. There's times we send out, we sent out 15 one time, we got one quote.
This is 23, in this case invitations were sent, we only received four.
You know, and as we've had in previous discussions, you know, with bidding procedure, regardless of size of the project, county, local, state, et cetera, you know, when you have contractors that are out there, and I'm not insinuating Kelly Heating is one of them, but when you have contractors that are out there that do things under the radar, whether it's not pull permits, not be registered, not pay prevailing wage, et cetera, et cetera, and in some areas they continue to get away with it, the good contractors aren't going to bid. They're throwing their hands up in the air. Why should I bother? Because this guy's going to come in and undercut me because he cheats on everything, so why should I bother coming to bid? And I agree, and I'm more than happy to work with you in figuring out a system, how we fix that so we can get more bidders here and more competitive numbers. But we also, you know, as I've always preached, enforcement of the current laws that we have is a huge issue. And, you know, that's statewide, those issues, you know, millions of dollars yearly, if not tens of millions of dollars are lost by these contractors doing what they do. And then, you know, the governmental agencies that are in charge of the projects not having enough manpower due to budget reasons, et cetera, they're hard to catch. And as you're aware, you know, we help you guys out when we can and catch things, but, you know, until we can figure out a system where enforcement is just as important as anything else, we're going to have guys that aren't, they're going to refuse to bid projects just because they don't have a fair chance. So, but, you know, I appreciate that. And with this, going back to the research and responsible contractor language, whether it's this job or any job, spent about 15 minutes on the computer this morning, and this is off Lorraine County Common Police Court website. Kelly Heating has four liens filed against them here in Lorraine County. Three of them, again, from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation, and one of them is from the Ohio Department of Taxation. The most recent being June 24th of this year, Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation. I spoke with the Bureau of Workers' Compensation Fraud Division this morning, and they currently do not have coverage for their employees. They're non-compliant, and they haven't been covered since September 1st of 2010. So does that make them responsible to have this project?
I would say no. What do you say, Don? You're the director.
I would, my opinion would be that we should go to the next bidder. And I would request-
Well, aren't we supposed to make sure that there's no tax liens in place before we award contracts?
I will review our procedures, but it's always, my understanding is, we have not been, we have not been doing that, but that's something that I can easily address and will address.
Well, can you contact Kelly's, find out what's going on, and then also take a look at the website and make sure that you can verify-
Absolutely.
...information is true. Why don't we put a hold on this?
Yeah, put a hold on it.
I thought that we were supposed to, through our process, make sure there was no, I don't know about the workers' comp, that's an interesting look, but I knew that, I thought that we were supposed to be clean of, clean of any taxing. To see Craig shaking his head yes, I thought that was a requirement.
The tax liens that we search are on the recipient, the homeowners. And there, we're checking to make sure that they're current, on their real estate taxes to the county, but-
I think there's another requirement we're under in purchasing, that they not have any garnishments or liens that are not being satisfied. They can have them if, as long as there's an agreement in place that they're being paid and so forth, but if they're outstanding, I don't believe we're supposed to do a contract with them. So we need to go back and take a look at that.
Yes.
Well, I made a double copy, I can give to whomever, all the information I spoke of this morning, so that way you can have. And again, public record that I came across in my email from workers' comp this morning on Kelly's status of non-compliance, you know, so I'll have that and more than happy to share whatever other information. But just wanted to make it a point that this guy probably should be looked at a little bit before he's awarded a job.
Appreciate you looking into that for us.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
They're pretty diligent.
Thank you.
I always look at the other end, like the next one that we're going to come upon. I called Don yesterday because I always look to see, make sure that the homeowner doesn't have more than one residence, because that's one of the criteria, and to make sure that their taxes are paid on their property. And there were two Wilma workmen, so I'm like, hey, check, make sure there's, you know, this isn't the same lady with two different properties. So you're, you know, I'm looking at one end and you're looking at the other end, so we need to look at both ends. And I'm glad you came up and brought this to our attention.
And I guess while I'm thinking about it, I should ask one last question. Is this Davis Bacon project, it's over $2,000, federal money, is this federal?
All, if, the source of the money is through federal, so it's Davis Bacon, and all projects through the County Commissioners are prevailing wage. In this case, it'd be the Davis Bacon.
And as always, I offer my assistance with the prevailing wage compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, thanks.
Did he give me that or Don that information?
Pardon me?
Do you want to give me that information or Don?
Whoever you want me to give it to.
Probably Teresa, and then Teresa can distribute it.
I'll withdraw my motion first.
I'll withdraw my second.
Do we want to hold on number 13 as well, then?
No, we, he found out that there are two separate Wilma workmen.
No, I'm talking about the, do you want to take a look at the S&amp;J Home Maintenance?
To make sure there's no liens on this.
Why don't you hold both of them?
Okay.
I want to take a look at that procedure. I know on our sealed bid package, we have an affidavit in there that they have to, you know, attest to certain stipulations. In the Request for Proposal process, those stipulations, either A, may not be required, or B, should be required, but they're not in this. We need to take a look at that real quick.
Okay, so hold 12 and 13.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Under Job and Family Adopt Statement of Policies for Prevention and Retention Contingency Program, effective October 1st, 2011 through September 30th, 2013, there were significant changes in Senate Bill 95 under Ohio Rev. Code 5108, which must include a Commissioner's certification that Job and Family has complied in adopting Statement of Policies.
So moved.
Second.
Question. Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Common Place, Create Fund 2015 Case Management Special Project Fund, effective August 19, 2011, a $15 fee is paid upon filing of any civil action or proceeding.
Mr. Looby, any comments on this?
Not unless the Commissioner means to have any questions.
Also moved.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski. Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Engineer Award Contract to Miller Builders, Apple Creek, Ohio, in the amount of $225,780 for the salt storage facility, seven bids were received on August 10th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Estimate was $250,000 to be paid from the Capital Improvements Fund Salt Shed Account. Issue notice proceed to be completed within 90 days and authorized administrator notify the Auditor to release for tangible completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you think we have an issue with the Engineers' Office with the same checking to make sure that the bidders are, have no liens or issues pending?
This, this looks like it was a sealed bid, and all the affidavits are in the bid package.
Oh, okay.
So the other work would have been conducted absent a sealed bid because it doesn't meet the threshold, so I believe this process is fine.
Okay.
Ms. Kelo.
Aye.
Skoski. Aye.
Mr. Williams. Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve and enter an MOU for consolidation with Sheriff Dispatch with 911 Dispatch.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we want the Sheriff to come on up? Who has the actual MOU?
Should be in the package.
Actually, there should have been a couple of copies of the agreement for you guys all to sign.
Morning, Sheriff. As you know, this has been a long process. Actually, we've been talking about this for several years, at least the last four or five, I think we've gotten a little bit serious about it. As you know, Brian Frederick from the Community Foundation's been working, trying to get Lorraine and Alariah and myself together to possibly consolidate some services for better efficiency and for cost savings. So we've, we've been meeting with him also. Matter of fact, we got a meeting in September, first part of September with him again. But this one's been going on, and I think we got a little more serious because Commissioner Kelo, I know you attended one of the first meetings when they were still up on North Ridge Road, and then we had another meeting where Commissioner Kukowski was filling in there as far as the 911 merger with us. And I give Commissioner Kukowski credit because she actually did come up with the idea of, well, we're looking at all these departments combining, but why don't the Sheriff and 911 look at combining, since we're both county agencies and we both have the same software? So at the end, we started looking at that a little bit more seriously. And then obviously with the economic conditions, with general fund money, I think it was something that we really had to look at real seriously. So as you know, you have the MOU, you looked at it. Obviously, I have a copy in my package this morning with my budget. So my budget for the last three years has been about 5.2 million. This will make it probably around 4.8. Now, the other caveat that I did have when we made this agreement was that we would bring three deputies back, which is the three I have laid off right now. Otherwise, there would actually be more savings, but I think that's really going to help us as far as the law enforcement division to get three more guys back. I know it will help us immensely. And myself and County Administrator Cordez and Chief Cavanagh, we've, we've had some pretty good meetings. I'm not going to always say they were pleasant, but, but they're all, always cordial at least. And, and I understand the concerns, and I think you understand some of the concerns that I have, because, you know, from the law enforcement end of it as a function for us, that is the lifeline to my deputies. The Communication Center has to be a lifeline to them. And it's a constant getting the proper information, knowing what to find out for the officer before he arrives on the scene. And it's a learning process. And actually, for the people at the Sheriff's Office, it's going to be a big learning process for them to learn the 911 procedures, which I know are not easy. You know, you have pre-arrival instructions, and you're also dispatching fire departments and ambulances. So there's a learning curve, I think, on both sides. I, I think it is the wave of the future that, you know, there's 15 police departments in this county. We're all going to have to start working together, and I think all the chiefs know that. I am the president of the Chiefs Association, and we have talked about this. You know, why does everybody need a dispatch center? It's even got to the point where why does everybody need a police department? So those discussions, I think, are well beyond my years. And, you know, you've got different mayors, and you've got different egos that you've got to confront. But I think the police departments as a whole think that there's some good ideas in that process, and they're going to probably continue to work on those. But I think this is going to be a good merger. Obviously, it's going to free some money up from the general fund, which, as we all know, next year is going to be as tough as the last three have been. But I think if we keep moving forward with this type of things and these kind of ideas, I think that it's going to make us operate more efficient, and it's going to operate at a cost savings. So, do the Commissioners want to expound on anything more?
I'm very happy that we were able to accomplish this. I think it's been a long time coming. I want to just commend Cavanagh and Sheriff and Cordez and all the negotiations that went back and forth between everyone, the people, the patients, that the dispatchers, the Sheriff's Dispatchers and the 911 employees, you know, I'm sure it's been very concerning to all those people, you know, wondering if they had a job or not. So we're hoping that we won't lose anybody through this process. We were hoping that by attrition, there will be no actual job losses, but, you know, we don't know that for sure. But I think this is a great opportunity for the sheriff and the commissioners to work together, and I think we will work well together. So I think that's all I have for, oh, yeah, go ahead. I'll let somebody else.
Commissioner Williams.
Well, first of all, I actually thank the sheriff for working on this when I first came in. I talked to you about it. That was one of my questions. And Ms. Kokowski actually jumped on board on this and threw hard work and making sure that through the negotiations on the commissioner's side, that the sheriff's department was well represented in those meetings. And she knew how important it was for the, to have deputies on the roads and taking a lookout for those areas where going from Rochester to Sheffield Township, how long it could take. And I just want to thank you and Ms. Kokowski, great job on this. It's definitely one of the best things that we've done in the county this year. And thank you for working on this and taking the time to do it.
And it's we, because we can't, I can't do anything as a commissioner. We do everything as a board.
That's true, but you led the charge on this this year.
You got this one done, Commissioner.
Okay.
Again, congratulations.
I think you just needed a woman in the room. That's all there was too. There was too many, you know.
Too much testosterone.
Too much testosterone in the room, so.
I might do it.
I think it's going to be very good for all of us, at least sort of the way for everyone else to start regionalizing, combining services, and hopefully we'll be able to work with the other communities and carry this far, because it's all about trying to meet the budget needs now and still perform the services that are required of us. So, yeah, thank you, Sheriff. Do you want to go down there and sign the MOU?
Yeah.
Commissioners, can I add one thing?
Sure.
I also want to thank the United Steelworkers of America for working with us at the bargaining table to be able to incorporate all of this. It could have been much more difficult, and we received a great deal of cooperation from the employees themselves over at the nine-one-one agency to be able to revamp our labor contract for this expansion and the way we need to go about this. I just want to make sure that they get the recognition that they partnered with us also. The, and I have that contract, and we have to, we have to deal with it. I want to talk to you about it in executive session, but there was a real, a big embracement there rather than beating our heads together for no good reason.
Yeah, very nice job starting out with one personnel.
One other person I wanted to recognize, I want to thank Prosecutor Will for letting us borrow Jerry, because he was, he was the go-between and mediator between us, and he's probably changed that MOU about fifteen times, but I, not to say it's-
Quick, sign it.
We know it's not perfect, but I think it's something that is a work in progress that we think we know because of Leeds issues and NCIC that we're going to have to look at some issues, but I want to thank Jerry for all his help too.
Did we, did you mention that this has to go to Leeds for their blessing before we can actually go forward?
Well, actually, we're able to go forward under our current arrangement. That's a future step.
That's correct.
We have a whole, not to misrepresent to the public that this is going to happen tomorrow. We still have months of integration and incorporation to do so that we can combine the, all the elements of what both of these things are. This paves the way to co-locating the work and start moving in that process, but we have a lot of action steps yet to accomplish.
That's correct.
Right.
And we're going to use our ORI originally, which is our agency identifier, and then the county is going to apply to be one too.
Now, one thing, Sheriff, you know, three deputies doesn't sound like a lot, but what's this going to bring to your department?
That's going to help us out immensely, because you figure if you've got three guys, you can put one on each shift, which is going to, you know, boost us up to at least three deputies on a shift.
Right.
As you know, the night we had that homicide, we had two deputies and a sergeant, and they were tied up there all night. So, you know, when you've got other calls coming in, you know, how do you pull people away from homicides to go on domestics, which, you know, you have to. But it is going to help us out a lot.
And you do actually do more than just the townships.
Yes, yes, we do. As you know, we're in the cities constantly doing, you know, the sexual offenders and the warrants and other jobs that we have to do. So the cities get our money's worth out of the sheriff's office, I can tell you that.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate everything.
Ms. Kowski.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla. Aye.
Mr. Williams. Aye.
Sheriff, if you want to come back up and we're going to-
We'll join us up front, we'll sign this.
Do you want to like the present?
It's not this hearing, is it?
No.
Could have framed them. Yeah, go ahead. Get the picture, get signed. Did you get it, Tony?
No.
No?
We have a cellphone.
Here, we have more work to do.
That's going to be tricky, because you're probably going to get the ball spot.
Watch the player.
I'm not going to say anything about that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, you know, sometimes we have a hard time understanding or, not us understanding, but the public understanding, the fallout from some of our difficulty with revenues and expenses in the county that we've been struggling with the last couple of years. I've been working with Fitch's on the county's bond rating, but also on the Port Authority's bond rating. And unfortunately, due to the county's problem, they've downgraded the Port Authority's bond rating based upon some things that are happening with county government. So you can see that there's a trickle-down effect for that. The, we still been, have achieved a triple A with a negative outlook for the county. I was hoping to get some, a stable look at that, but it's still negative, and they've downgraded the Port Authority from stable to negative based upon the pressures that we have in the county. I mean, I mean, we see to the draft letter, and I've been reviewing it, because we get a chance to comment on it before it comes out, but while it's going to be fairly strong that we've done a lot of work fiscally and moved the county in the right direction to shore up those areas that we're experiencing fiscal crisis in, they still don't believe we're anywhere near being stable enough, because we have been able to improve our revenue base. And they know the expenses are going to continue to increase no matter how much we cut. That's just, we can anticipate that Moody's will also be looking at our GO pretty soon. And I'm not completely sure that we're going to get a favorable outlook there, which is going to make the cost of doing projects and borrowing more expensive in the future. We worked for years and years to get those ratings up there, and now we're starting to see them slip, and it's not an encouraging sign. So that's all part of this whole budgetary revenue expenses cutting package that needs to be looked at. Our rating needs to maintain in a very high level so that we can do the projects and do the construction notes and the borrowing at a reasonable, reasonable amount of cost. That's all I have to add. Just want to thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I have two matters of pending court cases and one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss in the executive session.
Commissioners, report.
I just want to say hi to all the people again that I saw at the fair on Monday. It was the opening, and Ted and I attended the breakfast, and we had all, almost all the elected officials there. And I want to thank the sheriff again. He was the first elected official to stand up, and he promoted the sales tax, which we desperately need. And every elected official that stood up asked for all the people there that was at the breakfast to support that sales tax. And on that note, I just want to say that this board, even though we have been going through economic hardships in the county, we have not, have tried not to affect our safety forces, which is our sheriff's department. While we cut everybody else, we cut them less. And while we were cutting everybody, we tried to put more deputies on like we did today. You know, we're cutting our own department by ten percent, and what, did we cut you five percent, or did you not get cut this pass around? Did not get cut this pass around. So, you know, a lot of times when you're trying to pass a levy or a sales tax or a property tax or, you know, income tax, any kind of tax, they usually, you know, go after the safety forces as a fear tactic to get a sales tax passed. And we won't do that. We're not going to jeopardize our sheriff's department, and we're not going to jeopardize our citizens. So I just want to commend the sheriff and, again, ask for your support for the sales tax in November. And the fair is awesome. I skipped the train ride, because I'm going to give the ticket to my daughter so she can take my grandson, who's three years old, on the trip. His first train ride, he's going to love that. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, nice turnout at the fair. It's been quite busy. I've been out there the last couple of evenings. Actually, having a lot of questions being asked about the sales tax and what's going on, trying to explain county government to folks who, you know, just don't participate in it every day, and explaining the shortfalls we have in revenues and with the state cuts that are coming our way. But also, had an opportunity, I was asked to replace Commissioner Blair on our Ohio Public Works Committee, District Nine. I served with Commissioner Kokowski on that, representing Lorraine County, and I had the opportunity to fill your seat on the executive committee, Commissioner. So, and had some nice moves. There were some additional dollars. Bids came under in Amherst Township, so they're able to do additional roadway in the Hidden Valley area, which is very good. So it was a very good meeting. I actually attended, I had an executive committee meeting yesterday in Noaka, discussing personnel issues out there and other agenda items coming up for the fall in regards to our transportation needs. And I'd like to congratulate Lenny Eliasen. He's an Athens County Commissioner. When I first got in office, sort of like took me under his wing explaining what commissioners doing what our responsibilities are. He was actually just elected, the first person from the state of Ohio as the president of National Association of Counties. So, and Lenny's a great guy, really involved. Congratulations to him. And also, we have today, press release went out, Lorraine County Urban League Minority Business Assistance Centers. Lorraine County Urban League is hosting a reception to launch its Minority Business Assistance Center on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, from two to four P.M. in the fifth floor of the county admin building, part of our growth partnership. The Lorraine County Urban League will serve as a satellite location, provide training resources and assistance to minority and disadvantaged business enterprises. They're awarded a two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar grant to administer this. So congratulations to them also, and for those of you looking for help with small business, a great place to go. End of my report.
Just next week, we'll attend.
Forgot Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wow.
That was me.
I know. And I gave her a compliment, you know, before. Actually, mine's short. Back to school, Amherst started their school with other areas in Lorraine County, so I just want to, you know, welcome everyone, all the kids going back to school, have a good school year. My son actually went back to school on his first grade on his birthday, so.
Poor kid.
Yeah, wasn't happy about it, but Amherst has some great teachers there, and he was looking forward to it. I will be out at the county fair on Thursday, Friday and Saturday, so looking forward to talking with the residents of Lorraine County, so. End of report. Teresa, now you can go forward.
No, I was going to say, you just told us that issue, the tax issue, is going to be issue twenty-two. And that was another thing, we didn't even know what the number was going to be on the ballot until just recently. So we couldn't really put together any kind of literature. I saw something in one of the newspapers this morning about not having anything at the fair. I think that was you, Brad, wasn't it?
Yeah, on our income tax campaign.
Right. Oh, income tax. Did you say income tax?
He did not. The person who wrote the headlines did, though. I called Brad first thing this morning when I saw that.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's going to be issue twenty-two. We just found that out, so.
All right, next week at ten o'clock, we'll have the combined discussion on the budgets for correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment.
Are we going to do public comment, or are we going to Bob Reese first?
That's all right. We could do public comment and then.
Shirley R. Johnson Overland, I just, I missed last week's meeting, so I didn't hear all the discussion. So some of what I know is what I read in the paper. I want to, I guess people in the county appreciate the fact that you're keeping sheriff's deputies on the road, but I want to remind you that other programs, that some people are rather cavalier about cutting, like ones that help juveniles and so on, also are very important to our public safety in the long run. So don't just weigh the one aspect of public safety. Remember that in relation to lots of the court programs and other kinds of programs that you are supposed to support.
Well, that was directed at me, so I'll take that. What it comes down to is you don't have, we're looking at a deficit. Everything is on the table, and I'm going to defend the sheriff's department. They are a service that is vital to this county. You want to talk about economic development, you're not going to have economic development if you don't have road patrol in, throughout the county. Take a look at Columbia Township, the growth there and not being able to have sheriff or deputies patrolling that area. I know they have an issue with speeders and everything else, which becomes a public safety issue. For the teen crisis center, if it's that vital of a program, then the domestic relations judges can take a look at coming up with a way to reduce their costs in order to keep the program.
That wasn't particularly directed at you, although you did make a comment that was quoted in the paper. I'm just here to remind everybody, citizens and others, that there are other programs that are just as important in their own way for the safety of this community and for the continued goodwill, good, good appearance of the county for business or other things.
I don't disagree with you that there are good programs. The question is, how do you fund them?
Good morning, Commissioner Blair.
Who is that?
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to read a letter to you, after which I will give each of you a copy, and it will not take me three minutes. The letter says, Dear Commissioners, and is regarding Lorraine County Transit Budget Request. While attending various commissioner meetings, we became aware of the two thousand and twelve budget hearings affecting general fund departments. While Lorraine County Transit is not a general fund department, it has been funded with general fund dollars for a very long time. Should the one-quarter percent sales tax be approved in November, we are requesting that some monies be freed up to reestablish Lorraine County Transit's express, express bus system to Cleveland and possibly to Erie County, consistent with demand as identified by the West Shore Corridor Transportation Project First Phase. Based on counts done in March at G C R T A's Westlake and North Olmsted Park and Ride Lots, one sixty-five, nearly half of the total number of cars parked at Westlake, and seventy-five, nearly one-third of those at North Olmsted, were registered in Lorraine County. Noaka traditionally has C Mac funds available on a fifty-fifty basis. Lorraine County has not received these monies for quite some time due to our inability to match same. There is also the possibility of some private funding. Should the commissioners commit to the concept of freeing up some general fund dollars for public transit, our Lorraine County Transportation Coalition intends to actively support passage of this sales tax. Thank you for your consideration of this request to reinstate basic services in the Lorraine County Transit Department. And this letter is signed by Betty Blair, Commissioner Kayla's alternate to Noaka, Dr. David Hins, West Shore Commuter Rail Task Force Co-Chair, and Richard M. Ente, Lorraine County Coordinator, West Shore Corridor Transportation Project. And of course, commissioners, if you have any questions, these two gentlemen are here to answer them for you. Thank you so much.
Comments, commissioners?
I think right now, we don't have the economic condition that we're in. We can't promise anything. Well, you'll never get a promise from me on something I can't commit to.
Hey, I love that email with the jukebox. The jukebox with all the old songs on it?
From the nineteen forty's.
Yeah, wasn't it good? Thank you for that.
I'm not going to remember it.
No, I remember you.
Thanks.
Joe?
Coming up here wearing a different hat, Joe Thayer, President of the AFL-CIO here in Lorraine County. I'd just like to give everybody a reminder of the upcoming Lorraine County Organized Labor Day Festival, seventeenth year down at Black River Landing. This year, in light of the ten-year anniversary of September eleventh, we are going to be honoring the public safety forces, the police, fire and the EMT unions. So we look to have everybody down there. We're trying to set up an impressive opening ceremonies with the firefighters and the police. And, you know, I'd like to say, Labor appreciates the commissioners and all the departments of the county for their continued support of the festival. You know, every year, it seems to get better and better, and without everybody involved, it's not going to work. So thank you all for that.
Is that Sunday?
That's Sunday, September fourth. Opening ceremony start at noon. And, you know, again, like I said, we're honoring the public, public safety forces. So, then secondly, we're talking about other departments and agencies that help the folks in Lorraine County. The lady that came up and first spoke, Lorraine County Office on Aging, which is another vital department in the county that helps folks. We've been running short on volunteers for food delivery on the first Saturdays of the month. I believe food delivery for September would be September tenth. And contact Sue Malik at the Office on Aging if you're available to help volunteer and deliver food to the seniors in the county. That'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hey, Joe, are you still going to have the quarter hot dogs and everything there?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll be there.
Absolutely. Look forward to it. Thank you.
I'll put that down. We'll be there.
Any other public comment before we go into Mr. Reese's presentation?
Do you have the DVD, Ernie? Do you want to come up and speak before we turn it on?
Sure, sure. Because once I get started.
I know.
Good morning, commissioners, guests.
Good morning.
We had a board meeting, and Commissioner Kokowski is kind enough to serve as one of the volunteers on our board, which many of you know. The, every time that I come up here, I keep asking you for something for support, and this morning, I'm hoping to bring you a little bit of a gift. And that is to let you know what's going on in this county with your kind gift of the buses to the community. Now, those are costing a lot of money to run, but the one thing that it does do is it gives Goodwill a presence in the community. Goodwill a presence in the community, and the DVD that we have here is probably in violation of a couple of FCC regulations, but I'm gonna do it anyway, 'cause I'm not afraid of jail time. Let me tell you what it's costing us to run that, and year-to-date, we've given over 2,500 rides in those vans. One of them's broken down, but we have found private cars and things to make up the ones we have. We have, year-to-date, spent $66,400 on those vans to provide those rides, and the fee for service that we charge is $5,800 to do that.
It's $7 a ride, correct?
Well, between $5 and $7.50 a ride, depending on whether it's a round trip or a one-way, and frankly, if somebody doesn't have the money and they have a confirmed disability, we'll certainly, if we can schedule it in, we'll take them.
If they stop at Goodwill on the way home.
Yeah. I didn't wanna be that flagrant on it, you know?
And aren't you taking people out to the Lorain County Fair?
We have, you know, if, if they don't have any other way, we will take them, but Goodwill, yes, the sheriff's still here. I wanna tell you about the sheriff's department, they have also partnered with us in the Lorain County Coalition to help ex-offenders back into society, and Sheriff, thank you, because you've had a deputy or yourself at every one, I think, of the meetings that I've been at, so they're committed to helping the over, what is it, 700 people a year who are released into this county, who need those services to become tax-paying citizens rather than a burden. The other thing that's kinda neat is this program will be shown on PBS, Channel 25, W V I Z, next Wednesday at 1 o'clock. Probably grade school through middle school. It's a wonderful program for all of us, and I think when we saw it, Commissioner Kukowski, you'll agree, this is something that I think is really, really exciting, because while it talks about Goodwill, it's really the community. Without the community, there would be no Goodwill, and if it wouldn't be for Goodwill, I've got some statistics here, too, of what the effort that we've had, and the recycling effort that Goodwill has had for over 100 years now, meant in this community, just in the resources that we've been able to provide through those donations. We have been able to recycle, repurpose, reprocess 555,618 and 1/2 pounds of cardboard that would've probably gone to a landfill, 92,638 and 3/4 pounds of books that would probably have done the same, shoes, belts, purses, 46,500 pounds roughly of those items out of the landfill, 1,766 pounds of cell phones and similar electronics, metals and plastics, 46,108 and 1/2 pounds of that, and clothes, textiles, 764,196 pounds have been kept out of landfill. As you can see, well in excess of a million pounds out of the landfill of those products. Also, at the Goodwill stores, there have been 46,731 donors in our system, almost 47,000 individual donations made just till the end of July, and as far as customers, 149,021 to the end of July. And these are community citizens who are sharing with us, allowing us to do those things like the transportation, like working with the sheriff and 17 other members of the coalition. Goodwill has put up over $50,000 of that money to help that coalition get going. We're now recognized by the state of Ohio as one of the partner coalitions, and I was here just to thank the commissioners, and to let them know that your support of trying to get those pirate drop boxes out of our territory, and to help Goodwill do this, we're committed to taking that money and trying to put it back in the community where it's needed by those people who need it the most, people who are disabled, elderly, can't find any other way to church or synagogue or even to work. We're trying to provide that at a very reasonable cost to the person, even though it costs us a good bit. But if I could, I'd like to share this video with everyone, and while this was shot in California, it's very generic to what we do, and we invite you to come and take a look at our recycling salvaging operation, as well as come into the store and purchase items that your neighbors have donated because they're real treasures to someone. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to the video commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
You really could've cut that part out.
They should've used me. I filmed the screen better than he does.
We are at Goodwill, and I'm here with Jim Givens. Now, Jim, tell us a little bit about the organization.
Goodwill is a longstanding organization, it's a household name because we have 2,500 Goodwill stores around the country, and we help people in job training and finding jobs, and we work with people with disabilities, who are blind, or people who have other challenges in their lives, so that they can get a good job and take care of themselves and their families.
Now, it's interesting, when we're doing some research for this show, you know, trying to figure out where to recycle clothing, you guys kept popping up, I mean, it's just non-stop, Goodwill, Goodwill, Goodwill.
We're able to allow more than 2 billion pounds of clothing and other products to not go into America's landfills every year.
You guys have been around for over 100 years, is it safe to say, Jim, that you guys are one of the original green businesses?
The green pioneer, I like to think of us as. We were founded in 1902.
Wow.
And all in a belief in the human spirit.
Jim, what should we do with all our clothing?
Give them like to homeless people?
I give them to my sister.
Donate them?
Usually donating it to thrift stores.
I donate it to Goodwill.
Give them to my sister or my little cousin.
What you wanna do is, you wanna get your mom and dad to take you to a donation center. It's always best to go to a donation center that has a person there to, to receive, and you're able to make sure that those clothes that you don't wear anymore, that you grew out of, are going to a good place where they'll be reused or repurposed, and somebody else will get a chance to, to use them, and most importantly, they're gonna be avoiding that landfill. And it's not just clothing, it can be other items, too, other household goods, or computers like we have back here. You know, whenever you're done using something, always think again, can it be used by somebody else?
I think the most common dream that we get is, how do we help the planet? And this, this simple item of reusing or repurposing something, using it again, is so simple, and yet, we kinda all take it for granted.
You know, there are so many complex opportunities that none of us can understand on how to be green.
Yeah.
But if you donate the clothes that you don't wear anymore...
It's simple.
It's simple, it's just that simple, and you're helping the planet, and you're helping your neighbors.
We're gonna learn this whole process of recycling, whereas, I keep, this new word I keep hearing from you guys called repurposing.
Absolutely.
What are we gonna be seeing today?
Well, I think today, you're gonna, you're gonna see what happens when you clean out your closets, and you got bags full of clothing, that you gotta figure out what you gotta do with them.
Which I brought some today.
Excellent, excellent. How that clothing gets processed, organized, sold, how we keep it out of the landfills, and how we turn it into services for the, for your neighbors.
I told, we're moving on to meet somebody else.
I think we're gonna go on, we're gonna meet a couple of team members.
What is repurposing?
Good question. Could you tell me? I don't know.
You have, like, old clothes, and then you just save them until somebody else needs them, and then you just give them to them?
Making something with more purpose.
Iron man. To reuse it again, because people may need it more than you do.
Repurposing is donating something to another cause, to put it to good use.
Repurposing is taking an object and reusing it for something else it was originally intended for, like, taking a shirt and making it into a purse, or a pair of jeans into book covers for your school books.
So tell us, after the donation is made, what happens from here?
What happens to it is it's sorted, so if it's an item that's in good shape, ready to be sold, it goes to someone that will price it or put a tag on it, then it goes to someone else that's gonna hang it, and it is sent out to our retail stores. For those items which are not store quality, maybe they're ripped, they're torn, they're stained, we actually still have unused for those, they will be baled in big, large, thousand-pound bales to keep them out of the landfill.
How did you get to this point where it's separated out by different items?
As the people are sorting it, you'll see here, they have some containers next to them where they're working, so whether it's like socks, or underwear, or shoes...
Okay, yeah.
Or different items, all of these will go to the retail stores.
Trash.
Outwear, trash, exactly. Actually, it's plastic, so it will be recycled.
Check that out, so, right now, everyone's just basically going through the clothing, and if you don't mind me stepping in here?
Absolutely.
And just taking a peek out of them, make sure there's nothing wrong.
Right, right, and look at this, this is a designer brand.
Sure, now that looks, I mean, it's wrinkled, but...
It's wrinkled, but it's new, it's in great shape.
Sure.
So definitely someone looking for a job can come to Goodwill and find some great products.
Is this the clothing that is not of the store quality?
That's correct.
You grab something, I wish you just accidentally, this one, just do this in here, if it's okay. So you'll take this jacket, and this isn't going to the trash, is what you're saying?
No, it's gonna go and be baled, it's a thousand-pound bale.
Wow, so that's going that way?
Right.
And then all these other clothing items that people brought in that are still really good are going this way?
Right, which are gonna go to our retail stores and be sold to raise revenue to fund our programs here at Goodwill. Here's your fun fact.
Goodwill Industries recycles over 95 million pounds of clothing annually, that's about 25,000 cars.
Oh, check it out! You've got to be kidding me! Thank you, I'm getting a clap.
Goodwill is a place for everything, isn't it?
You know it's official, it is official.
You've seen it.
What do you do with this?
That will go to our stores, and it'll be sold, or we'll save it till Halloween, if it doesn't sell right now, we'll hold onto it.
You know what, I think it's already sold. I, I think it's sold, right there. How, what did you receive?
Well, to give you an example, last year, we sent out of this facility over 3 million pieces of clothing to go to our retail stores, and that's just this, so Goodwill's processed millions of pieces of clothing.
How many stores here in Orange County do you mean?
We actually have 21 stores in Orange County, so this is happening all throughout the nation.
Wow, that is unbelievable.
I know.
I guess what the most unbelievable thing is, is again, we are taking all of these items, clothing, shoes, household items, and we're keeping them out of landfill.
Exactly, exactly, I mean, they're reused, our shoppers are either looking for a good buy, there are also people that, you know, maybe can't afford to shop elsewhere, so they have an opportunity to shop, as well as, you're right, these are all kept out of the landfill, and they have a second life somewhere else.
Yeah, you know, in addition to that, I mean, as we just showed that very cool gorilla thing right there, that's something very novelty, very, I have no idea where to get that. Now I know I can come here and get it.
Exactly.
Well, you can't, because I already got it. Why would you donate clothing?
To make all the other kids warm. Because there's other people that are less fortunate that need it more than my family does.
Because some people don't have that much clothes, and they don't have money to buy those, so we donate it to them.
Get rid of the old stuff that we don't use, so that somebody else can use it.
We shop at your store, so we like to have a lot of stuff come back to us, so we figure if we're giving it, it's kinda like good karma, we get it right back, so.
Because some people need it more than you do, and so I'm just throwing it away.
Great, I'm ready to work.
Okay, well, here at Goodwill, we take safety very important, so you have your gloves on, these are actually specially made gloves that protect against cutting your hand, because sometimes when people clean out their closets, you know, they might accidentally put glass mixed in with clothing, and maybe it gets broken, so we wanna protect our employees.
All right, so we have some clothing items here, huh? There we go.
Undergarments are not resold at Goodwill, again, there are Goodwills that use them for wipers or different items.
And how about we have some jeans?
There you go, they look great.
Oh, they look great!
A nice name brand, again, designer brand, very nice brand.
Wow, these are like, feel like a hundred dollar jeans right here.
Exactly.
Look at this!
I know.
Look at that!
Again, very nice.
This is random, we did not plan this.
No, not at all, not at all. Good sample of what comes to Goodwill.
Look at this, look at that, wrapper, right there on the back.
Look at this garment that she just pulled out, still has a price tag attached to it.
Oh, it's the price tag, yeah, with the labels on it, wow! Now, this is something that we didn't talk about earlier, even with Jim, that Goodwill's is not a for-profit company.
That's correct, and what we do is, we provide job training, we provide career opportunities for people with disabilities, other barriers, each Goodwill has a little different focus on the mission, but we're all here to take the proceeds and fund them back into our programs.
Sounds like this whole donating thing is pretty huge.
It is huge.
Not just keeping, you know, textiles and clothing out of the landfill, but putting new jobs back into the economy, too.
Exactly, isn't that amazing?
That's pretty cool, the light just went off for me, like, wow! All right, what do I do with this again, in the trash?
Actually, we do put it in a container, but it's not gonna go in the trash, it's actually gonna be recycled. We recycle plastic, the hangers that things come on get recycled, so everything gets recycled.
What about a box of shoes?
Box of shoes?
A box.
The box itself gets recycled, we have a fabulous cardboard recycling program here, so we'll be happy to show you that.
What if people wrap it up in Saran Wrap?
Saran Wrap will get recycled with shrink wraps and plastic bags and...
Oh, what if people wrap it with, like, zip ties?
Zip ties are plastic, too, so those can go in recycling as well.
What if people put it in a big, huge box?
We'll probably sell that.
Oh, okay.
Here's your fun fact.
Every American throws away about 68 pounds of clothing each year, that's a lot of clothing.
Throw it in the yellow, or maybe it's orange, peach, or is fuchsia your color? Maybe it's red.
Correct.
I cannot believe how many colors you have.
Can you believe it? This is a Goodwill store, this is what people either didn't need, didn't want, outgrew, and here it is, here for somebody else to purchase and for the clothing to have a second life.
This is unbelievable, I'm looking around, and I see, like, red's right here in front of me, blue's on that side, a mixed color of pinks right here, lots of khaki and pants, like, this is unbelievable, you separate everything by color?
We do at this Goodwill, again, each Goodwill's different, some Goodwills mix the colors and size it, we're a Goodwill that does it by color.
How many of these items will you end up selling here?
We hold 50,000 garments in this store, and what we do at this Goodwill is, we rotate these products out, none of these items will stay here any longer than four weeks. If it hasn't sold, it's gonna be sold either at our auction store, or it will be baled in a thousand-pound bale.
We keep alluding to this whole baling, then, we'll talk about it in a bit, but again, not everything in the store that is repurposed will actually be resold here in the store.
Exactly, exactly, there are some items, just that nobody may want to purchase, so those items will just get pulled out of the system.
Here in the store, do you get feedback from people who come in, like customers, that are saying, "Wow, I'm shocked that I was able to get this for this price"?
Oh, exactly, I mean, you have people that spend the whole day here, we'll have regular customers that come in, they'll just start with one rack and just work their way through the whole store, and they'll be here for hours, and that's the same at any Goodwill across the nation, you'll have customers that are in there every single day looking for the newest, most exciting thing that came out today.
Well, that's great, I mean, obviously, we're in the back, and we sell as many things that were going on at the back, and how much guys are processing back here, I'm stunned to see all this out here!
Exactly.
This is unbelievable!
Exactly.
I think about all the times that I've made a donation to the Goodwill, and I don't know that I've ever been in a store in the last, like, 10 years. I guess for me, it's like, it's one of those great eye-openers to know that, you know, I made a donation, I kept it in a landfill, that's a good power of battle, now I can come here and sell.
Right.
So, other people do the same thing!
Exactly.
Hey, anything goes, remember, even if it's something that you're not gonna wear, somebody else may be interested in it, that's what the whole idea of repurposing is all about. What is Goodwill?
Goodwill is a store company, um, they're all over, and they sell anything you can possibly want.
Um, it's a charity that you can donate clothes to.
I think there's just a couple definitions, but I know there's a place called Goodwill that you can take your clothes to donate.
Where you can donate clothes away and help people. Goodwill is this, this store that, um, people donate clothes and other objects to, so that they can give it to other people who need it more than you do.
Goodwill, uh, being able to help others, do good for, say, the community, or living in the world.
tell us about these electronics.
Yeah, this electronics store, you know, people keep a computer a year, they're tired of it, two years, they're tired of it, it comes here to Goodwill and has a new life, and just like electronics, even though VCRs, not a lot of people still have VCRs, they're popular here. they're popular here at Goodwill. If you have electronic at home and it doesn't work, people need it for parts to repair maybe their old electronics at home. So, definitely electronics are big here at Goodwill.
This electronics section is rather large.
Yes, this is a separate store, actually, here in Orange County. Just electronics and computers.
All Goodwills, they do not have the separate areas, what you're saying?
That's correct. Not all Goodwills do. We actually, um, computers, we clear the hard drives. If people are worried about their privacy, Goodwill takes care of that for people. We take all their data off, so they're secure. And if it's a good computer, it'll get fixed and resold. If it's a computer that's too old, it's gonna get taken apart.
Is it safe to say that electronics are the second most common item you get here at Goodwill?
Probably not the second most popular. Well, the number one item is clothing, of course. And then the second most popular is housewares. You know, the dishes, the china, home decor, all of that. It is a huge seller throughout Goodwill.
I'm trying to think, what have we done with our old plates and household items when we were done using them? And we repurposed them, because we gave them to a family member.
Which is great. Which is great. But here at Goodwill, you know, you can find a job for somebody here at Goodwill. So, by bringing those plates here, you're providing a job for somebody. But if you wanna think globally and give to help other people, you know, Goodwill is definitely the place.
What are textiles?
Oh, it's something text, and it, like, goes through the system, and it, a style of texting format? I checked. Water, power, milk, cloth, fabrics, um, clothing material, I guess. Clothing, fabric?
I'm here with Leonel. Leonel, what are textiles?
Well, textiles is clothing. It's, uh, men's clothing, and women's clothing, and children's clothing, but it's also made.
So, the material, the cloth material?
Yes, it's made out of polyester, or it's made out of cotton, or it's made out of combinationable.
What do you do with it all?
As you can see, we have an operation here where we make bales of this clothes. Aiming it as a donation, it was processed, it was, uh, you know, at that point, we decided whether we wanna send it to the retail store or not, because it didn't have as well a standard, whether it was soiled, stained, torn, any kind of damage. So, then that product became a product that was offered at a wholesale market, in an auction. And then, once he saw that the auction, then the customers had an opportunity to take it either a hundred percent, or we get anything they don't want.
So, you're basically keeping the customer from taking the clothes, going home, or going to the business, and going, eh, throw that away, keep this?
That's right. Because that would eliminate that from going to the landfill. But what it does also, when we do that, we call it customer service. The customer now has more space in their vehicle, so they can buy more from us.
It's a win-win. That's an absolute win-win.
It works for everyone, good sir.
If you have this amount of clothing that come into the store as donations, you know, how, where's the level of what actually ends up being the byproduct?
We'll probably have about at least twenty-five percent of the total that will become byproduct.
So, seventy-five percent of what is coming in here is in repurposed.
That is absolutely correct.
Yeah, yes. Wow. What happens to the remaining part?
Well, that, that over twenty-five percent goes into these kinds of bales.
Yeah.
Then these bales are sold to another company. This is companies that are located, sometimes grows to your neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, they buy the bales, and then what they do when they buy these bales, they begin to process all over again. In other words, what they do is they break the bales open, and then they start breaking the bales into different categories. They go by cottons, they go by polyesters, they go by men's, for children's, you name it, every category. And then, this product is then sold to the world, to other markets, so it travels the world.
So, this is at the end?
Absolutely, yes.
This isn't going to a landfill necessarily?
No, 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 no. This is gonna be reused. The idea is that we don't waste anything. We try to maximize the donation, and really try to find a market for anything that is donated to Goodwill.
You guys take this very seriously.
Well, we take it very seriously, because out of the donations that we receive, and out of the sale of this merchandise, then we can create job opportunity and training for people with disabilities and all the various unemployment. And so, we try to maximize every piece of donation that we receive, so that we can, uh, fulfill the mission of Goodwill. Create independence for people with disabilities.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. This is, this is awesome.
Here's your fun fact.
People who shop at consignment at their stores save over two-point-five billion pounds of clothes from going to the landfills.
Now, I wanna make sure I clear people out of home. Just, we haven't said it yet, but I don't want you to think that Jim's being rude by not looking at me. Jim, you have a cane for obvious reasons. You tell us what the cane is for.
So, I use my cane for mobility.
Yeah.
And for identification.
Oh, okay. Identification.
Yeah, so that somebody knows that I can't see, because the white cane is a pretty universal symbol that a person is blind.
So, now, you can provide jobs for people who have disabilities.
Yes.
What type of disabilities can you talk about?
Uh, we work with, uh, thousands of people in local communities around the country. People who are blind, people who are wheelchair users, people who have intellectual disabilities. And we work with a variety of other, uh, groups of individuals, uh, who have other challenges that they're working to overcome. Could be an addiction, uh, challenge, or could be a young man who found himself in trouble with the law, and is trying to right himself and be a contributor to the community, and comes out of jail.
Jim, am I correctly saying that everyone here has come to work here through your job training program?
Yeah. If you look around, these are all Goodwill team members, and through job training and other services that we provide, we work with millions of people around the country to either employ them within Goodwill, or in the community as a bank teller, or a nurse, or in construction. But we also provide, uh, an array of services that support individuals, because it's really about independence. So, that could be computer training, or it could be training, uh, like we have here in Orange County with, uh, with a physical fitness center specifically designed for people with disabilities, so that hundreds of people who use wheelchairs have the opportunity to gain independence and better themselves.
What is the number one reason to donate?
Well, I guess to reuse and to reduce, so that we don't have so much landfill stuff with clothes and stuff. You know, a lot of people get rid of things they shouldn't be getting, so...
Because it makes you feel good, and other people need it more than you do.
Help people need, so that you can make other people happy with stuff that we don't want, but they do want and they need. So, people that don't have clothes or anything, that they can ask them.
What is the big vision for the DICon? Do you want it to be as popular as the Chasing Arrows?
Oh, even bigger. If we're successful with this, you'll see the DICon on every piece of clothing, so that the clothing manufacturers have a way for their clothing to really work themselves, uh, through the entire lifecycle of the product in the most effective way for the planet.
Hey, kids at home that are watching this, families at home that are watching this, what can they do?
Well, the simplest thing for everybody is recognize that you have an organization, that's a credible organization, that can really accept donation in a responsible way. But in a bigger way, and the opportunity for kids and their schools, is to really have a donation drive, and they can go up to donate at goodwill.org/kids and see all the easy steps to having a donation drive, which would help the kids learn, uh, the importance of service, would help the kids grow as leaders within their schools, and most importantly, help the kids help their community and help the planet.
Well, Jim, I thank you so much. This has been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you spending time with me. I wanna thank everyone out here at Goodwill for taking the time and showing us how it, how easy it is to really make a difference. And I especially wanna thank you, Chris and Ashley, for sending us on today's Curiosity Quest goes green. Now, if there's something that you're curious about, or you want to know the answer to, why don't you let me hear from you? Go to curiosityquest.org, click on the Send Us On A Question link, and simply tell me what you're curious about. And it could be you that sends us on our next green adventure. Now, remember, this is our planet, and it's our responsibility to take care of it. So, I wonder, have you gone green? I'm Joe Green, and I'll see you next time. And we'll show you and teach you all about how Curiosity was shopping at a place that donating, and back on the next episode of Curiosity Quest goes green, water. Sorry. Donating broke something. I'm sorry.
Again, Commissioners, let me thank you for partnering with Goodwill, and let me also tell you that our sixth store in this county will be opening in Oberlin, so we can also provide services down for that area of the community. I did wanna say, without the kind and generous partnership of the county commissioners, as well as a lot of other people in this county, we wouldn't be able to provide this. And just to let you know that, um, our prayers are with you guys in everything that you do, and that you've got a true partner in this county to help people, not just with disabilities and other barriers to employment, but people who wanna maximize their potential in life. And I think that that's what we've heard today in many areas. They wanna maximize their happiness in, in life, and that we're here as a partner. And feel free to call upon us, and if there's any way we can help you in the future, we'll do that. And I hope that you take consolation a little bit in that the things that are donated are not put in the landfills, but they are recycled, and that Lorraine County is in the top twenty-five of all Goodwills. In fact, we're about number five in all the Goodwills with our effectiveness in all the world of a hundred and sixty-four Goodwills in North America. So, you can be very proud of this county and the support that they've given us, Commissioners. So, thank you very much. God bless you.
Thanks, Bob. Nice organization, nice job.
Commissioners, uh, with regarding, uh, your, uh, committee on recidivism, I have assigned Melissa Stefano and Mary Murphy, uh, to that county, that committee to work with workforce development issues and family issues, uh, as a charter course for Lorraine County. So, we do have representation on that. And not to mention that Goodwill has a great auction website. That Commissioner Kokoski thing visits oft.
Seeing that video made me wanna go shopping.
We invite you all.
Any other comments?
Any other comments from the audience? Okay. Questions?
If we can take a five-minute break, and then come back and reconvene to do the budget hearing with the sheriff?
Oh, yeah, second. Mr. Kev?
Hi.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Commissioners, have we convened from executive, or reconvened sheriff's budget?
Your show, Sheriff.
Okay. First of all, I wanna introduce, I got with me Chief Deputy Dennis Kavanaugh, Captain of Law Enforcement, Jim Grodowski, and Lieutenant Jack Hammond, who's the Director of Corrections. First off, cover the general fund budget. I mean, I give you a synopsis of everything here, actually a report, and I didn't wanna read verbatim from that. But what I did do is make like a basic outline of it, and I wanted to go through it. Some of this, I know you know already. Just, just wanna reiterate where we're at. Two thousand nine, as you know, we had the general fund budget cut twenty percent, uh, budget for the general fund. Dan was running about six-point-three million. Uh, it was cut down to about five-point-two. And as you know, I laid off twenty deputies. Two thousand ten, we were still running into a little bit of shortfall, which, uh, had me lay off a captain. I wasn't gonna lay off any more deputies at that point, so I laid off the law enforcement captain. As you know, this morning, we, uh, we just merged the LCO's dispatch with nine-one-one with the memorandum of understanding. And my guestimate is gonna save the general fund probably about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars by the time you figure out all the benefits and everything. And that's for eight dispatchers and one supervisor. And also, uh, the last couple of years, we've upgraded some equipment at the sheriff's office. As I give you a copy of this narrow banding thing where everybody's gotta go to a different band, otherwise your radios won't work by twenty thirteen. So, it's called BMP-25 compliant, which I give you a copy of that also. Captain Grodowski got an estimate of just upgrading our voters, which we have seven of those around the entire county, was about a half a million dollars. Uh, to upgrade the radio equipment itself was probably about fifty thousand. So, obviously, we won't be spending that money out of the general fund, uh, for next year, because this had to be done by January twenty thirteen. I appreciate getting three laid-off deputies back. Uh, we were down to three laid-off guys. We didn't get anybody back, per se, as you know, but what had happened is we had people leave to go to other departments. Uh, I got two that are corrections officers right now, and one that's working out of the drug task force. Those'll be the three that will come back as deputies.
Will jobs open below zero, Sam?
Yes, 'cause I wanna replace those, and I'll get into that as we get down further through the budget. What I'm asking for my general fund this year, obviously, I backed out the dispatchers. I'm asking for four million, eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, forty-nine dollars and one cent. And I do have a breakdown in there of my general fund, if you want to take a look at that, or when you get time. Obviously, if you have questions later, I can answer them. And obviously, we're saving from last year's budget from what I would've asked and got the same budget, which was five million, two forty-six, seven oh five. Uh, we're cutting that down by four-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. Actually, four-hundred-and-five, five seventy-two, ninety-nine. As you know, right now, I have seventeen deputies. Uh, I don't call them road patrol, because in my opinion, we're not doing a lot of road patrol. I call them crime response units, because they're pretty much going from one call to the next. But adding those three'll take us up to twenty, which will be a huge help. There's no doubt that, as you know, we, we do the coverage for eighteen townships, and that's about fifty-five thousand people that live in those townships. And, and we are their only sole protection, police. And everybody gives you, what about the state patrol? What about this? The state patrol handles auto accidents. They're traffic experts. They're not law enforcement as far as handling things. But, uh, we can call on them to assist us in emergencies, but they have their own duties to do, and I look at it, we have our own duties to do.
How do we compare to other counties with number of deputies?
Comparable-wise, I mean, you know, like, if you look at Butler County and things like that, they're bigger than us. But they have, I think, better funding sources than us. That's the thing.
But still, I mean, as far as area, I mean, population, but area, we're fifth largest in the area, and that's very similar.
I think prior to the layoffs, we were probably comparable. Now, I can tell you that they have more officers than we have. There's no doubt about it. These are comparables.
Okay, so they have, uh, twelve, sixteen officers or more there?
Yeah. And, and we're not the only ones going through this. I mean, you know, I'm on the Board of Directors at Buckeye State Sheriff's Association. I go to their meetings. This economy's going on all over. I mean, there's certain pockets in certain areas that obviously are doing better. Just like Lorraine County, you got eight, you might like, they're doing a little bit better, maybe than other areas in the county. But, uh, overall, I think, you know, most counties are hurting, and then you guys know the reason why, because the, you know, the states, I look at it, taking some of the burden off of them, but they're putting it on everybody else, so...
Do any of those comparable counties have the police districts? I spoke with Bob White last night. He uses the Black County Township Association. Who's talking? You're talking about your proposal, you're working with the townships. Do any of those other counties have those police districts already in place, or they...
Yeah, I know Summit County has one, or several.
They got individual contracts with individual townships. Um, I think we're looking at something that's probably hasn't been done in the state yet, by merging, trying to get all the townships to develop one police district. But a lot of town, a lot of counties have individual contracts. We're trying to join it up together. I think we're one of the first are looking at something like that.
And as you know, we got four now. And we're, we're still working on that. We got Columbia, we got Eaton, you know, you got New Russia, and then Sheffield Township's just signed on, so...
Jim, we can hear the background from you.
It's okay. Uh, yeah, I guess what I wrote down here, and obviously, you know, you know, I know I'm one of probably about eighteen departments, and I'm saying, I'm not saying anybody's more important than anybody else. I mean, I think that the county is intertwined together. You know, 'cause I've even had my guys go, well, gee, why don't they lay more people off in the auditor, and here and there, and treasurer? And I says, well, that's a pretty good one. You don't have any money coming in, you're not getting paid. And when there's no bills getting paid, everything shuts down. So, that's why the clerks tied in us with the paperwork. The prosecutors tied in us with, obviously, uh, you know, getting people out of jail, getting them to trial, getting them to prisons. Uh, you know, you got the judges tied in there, and, and, you know, everybody's intertwined together, including the treasurer, the auditor, recorder. If the recorder isn't doing her job, it shuts the civil office down. So, it's, it's all intertwined together, I think, as you guys know that. My personal opinion, since this country began, a basic function of government is to provide law and order in our society. Uh, I don't care what party you're from, I think most people would attest to that. Some might disagree that, hey, I got my own gun, I'll take care of myself, but, uh, I think society itself needs police, military, whatever you got that way. Uh, for me to do my job properly as sheriff, as you know, this takes deputy sheriffs. The sheriff can't handle every call. It's just, I wish it could happen that way, but it really doesn't happen that way. I believe this is where there's a mandate. And as you know, I, you know, you've heard this from me before, that, uh, you know, we are to provide the public peace to the public, and I think we have taken our lumps just like everybody else has. We cut what we can cut. Uh, I do have a no-overtime policy in effect, and all my captains, chief deputies, lieutenants on down the line know that, uh, 'cause I check in every single card, every single morning, and look at every single sick form, and you, you name it. I look at it. Now, I question something, I bring it back to them, and then they look into it. So, they know that I watch that stuff very closely, and they watch it, too. Uh, as you know, we've taken away the support cards from the deputies, which I thought that was an excellent program, where they drive them back and forth from home, where we could send them on car calls when they came in to work. When they're on their way home, they'd back up other cars, or they could handle something on the way home. And they weren't paid for the first twenty minutes of that, and... And to be honest with you, when we had that support card program, I don't ever remember any deputy putting in for overtime in those type of situations. We've cut our major equipment purchases, as you know, with the vehicles. We used to have a very successful program where every year, even though you didn't put it in my budget, we would try to buy eight cruisers. And this would keep the fleet up to snuff. We haven't done that for three years, and as you know, and for obvious reasons. If you got officers laid off, you're not going to be buying new vehicles for them because there's no money. We did happen to get one this year, thanks to Chief Deputy Kavanaugh, who, through OCJ, is the, you know, Ohio Criminal Justice Services Program down in Columbus. He found a grant to at least buy us one car. As you know, the federal earmarks, what we've really helped us as far as bringing some of our radio equipment up to snuff was the portables that I was talking about before, and the mobiles that are actually in the cruisers. We have been brought them up to the narrow banding for the P-25 compliant. That was through, and I thank Senator Brown and Congresswoman Sutton, who got us these, you know, people make fun of these congressional earmarks. Without those congressional earmarks that we got those grants for, we'd have been not able to replace those radios or those mobiles to bring those up. And this is so, as you know, since nine-one-one happened, law enforcement, fire, whoever could not talk to each other. And that was one of the major things that they said, we all got to get on the same communications. So being P-25 compliant, you'll be able to talk to each other once this is all done. So that's a positive thing. But we all know the grants are drying up federally, and earmarks, I mean, the federal government just made numerous cuts, and I'm sure that's going to affect the cops programs, any kind of earmarks that we can get down the road. We're still going to apply, obviously, but I just see that money drying up also. The civil office, you know, that's a mandate of a sheriff. Since two thousand and two, we had seven hundred and twenty-seven sheriff sales, and in two thousand and ten, we had two thousand three hundred and ninety-eight. So as you can see through that nine-year span, it's increased two hundred and thirty percent. I've always said that's not a record that anybody wants to break. You hope it gets back down to seven hundred or down to zero. I'm not, I'm a realist and don't think that's ever going to happen, but you would hope the economy at some point would get better, and people have jobs and maintain their homes and stop losing their homes. But that civil office, you know, they did over a hundred million dollars in sheriff sales just last year. And that's not the only job they do. I think you also know, they handle all the subpoenas, they handle all the temporary protection orders and civil protection orders that come out of domestic relations. They handle all the indictments, writs of execution, jury notices, nuisance abatements. They have a multitude of duties over in that office.
Sheriff, how many staff are in that office?
I was just going to get to that, the next line. They do that all with seven people. And that's three typists, office manager, who's Mary O'Chennis, who's an excellent employee, Lieutenant Davis, who oversees that and has computerized that office, and two deputies. Now, the problem that we do have is those road deputies are always serving some type of paperwork. Whenever they can't get something done, especially with temporary protection orders or civil protection orders that have to be served in a timely manner because those deal with domestic violence, that overspills onto the law enforcement division. So they take that paperwork and have to go serve that no matter where it's at. So that does tie those officers up, but that, that's just a duty that we have to do. Because if somebody doesn't get served with something, and God forbid, something happens to that person, and then they're going to say, hey sheriff, why didn't you serve that protection order? That guy wasn't even supposed to be there. So it's just, you know, that's, that's a liability, I think, that we all have. The court service, you know, we have six criminal division courts in this county, three domestic relations, and one probate. And people think, gee, probate, believe it or not, we take people over there once in a while. It's not, not an everyday occurrence, but it does happen. As you know, we do numerous arraignments, preliminary hearings, pre-trials, trials, and sentencings. And you have to take the inmates back and forth. There is video arraignments that we do, but you cannot do that for every single charge. Sometimes the inmate has to be before the court, has to be able to talk to his attorney at that point. And those are just mandates that we have from the courts. And then they also handle everybody that goes to prison. Once somebody's sentenced and we get the paperwork from the courts, we try to get them out of our jail as quickly as possible. Now, these deputies here that we have do that job also. One blessing that we have had, since they opened the state prisons over here in Grafton, that that is a reception center at LCI, Lorraine Correction Institute. We can take the inmates there. What they do is leave there for two weeks to a month, and they classify them, and they decide what other institutions that they're transferred to. Now, the females, they got to go to Marionville. They, you know, we have to take them down to there. But one of the problems that you run into is as they transfer these inmates to these other institutions, I can tell you, some of them have three or four cases pending. Or if somebody violates one of the laws over here in Grafton, assaults another inmate, a felonious assault, rape, whatever you got, they end up getting re-indicted in Lorraine County. We have to take them back and forth for that case, even though they're in prison. So, believe it or not, it's the shell game that we're constantly doing. We're taking them, we're bringing them back. And as you know, a few years back, when they had all the resentencing that they had to do, the judges, we had to take all these inmates, bring them back to go over to be resentenced for their hearings. And you know how their docket is too, so it's not like this, you bring them back and they stay a day or two. Sometimes they're here two weeks, sometimes they're a month, and then we're responsible for that state prisoner in our jail at that point. Another thing with extraditions, we don't do every single extradition. I try to either use the marshal service when I can, or we use a private contractor to help us with the expeditions. Some expeditions, my deputies actually have to go pick them people up. We've picked people up in Hawaii. My officers did not go to Hawaii, I can tell you that, that was private. We've picked people up in Puerto Rico. And, and you remember when Greg White was here, and Danny Wellnow was the prosecutor? Especially sometimes, you know, you think with the, with the support payments, where they're not making their payments to the child, to the child support. They are very hard on them, because some of these guys, they think, hey, if I go here, I go here, they're not going to pick me up. Well, I think they got a rude awakening when they get extradited back from some of those areas for that. And if you allow them to do that and you don't do anything about it, then it just, nobody follows any laws at that point. We also service, I think as you know, five municipal courts. That being Lorraine, Alaria, Oberlin, Vermillion, and Avon Lake. Obviously, we don't do a whole lot in Avon Lake, and Vermillion is limited to a township like in Brownell. But we still have to know all the paperwork with those courts, still have to take inmates back and forth for trials and things that they have there. Once again, we use the video arraignments when we can, but you can't do that on every case. Let's see, and security of the justice center, as you know, we're responsible for that. The judges are in charge of their own courtrooms, we're in charge of the building with the commissioners. But the problem is, if there's something happening inside a judge's courtroom, he's not going to handle it, we're going to handle it, as you know that. The admin building here, in my opinion, there should be a deputy in this building full-time. You got all the elected officials here, you got all the different offices with the treasurer, the auditor, the commissioners, everybody. And as you guys know, you get irate people over here every once in a while.
Was there a false alarm yesterday with the issue? Is that a?
I did not hear about that.
Did you hear about anything?
Probably court guys handled it. Yeah, we've been having alarms the last few days.
And at one point, we had sixteen deputies to do all these jobs. We're down to eleven right now. As you know also, and I've talked to the commissioners about this, that, you know, we have to run those magnetometers at certain times when the employees egress and ingress, and other people that are coming to that court constantly. And you do have to monitor that because things happen everywhere. You know, you get somebody that comes in with a gun or whatever, you just don't know what they got on their mind, whether it's a domestic or something of that sort, or just somebody is just upset about something. So you do have to watch those kind of things. I know sometimes you'll see deputies there, like, well gee, what's this deputy doing there? What's that? And believe me, I don't want my guys sitting around over there. As commissioners have told me, if I see someone sitting around, I'm going to, I'll ask the same questions that you will. Now, they are needed there. A lot of times when we talk to the chief and the captain about this too, so we will monitor that kind of stuff, but they are needed over there. One thing they also do during the daytime is they run all the inmates for any type of medical appointments that they have. Whether they got to go to a doctor, you know, to the hospital, they will guard them during that time. During the off-hours, I take one of my crime response deputies, my law enforcement deputies, and have to put them on those inmates. Because obviously, you can't have an inmate say, hey, just, you know, would you not please leave here when we put you in this hospital, just kind of stick around? As you all know, that's not going to happen. And one thing some people don't understand, and I think the general public does not understand, is when these inmates are in our care and custody, we are responsible for them. Do I always agree with everything? No. But as a sheriff, I understand that's one of the things that I'm obligated to do. I'm not a doctor and I'm not a nurse, so if a guy says I'm having a heart attack, I don't know whether he's having one or not. One good thing that we have done is that the nurses that we have on staff, we've gotten them those EKGs, they can hook them up and tell the person, no, you're just having stress right now, you're not having a heart attack. So that, where corrections officers used to make that call, it was a huge liability. And believe me, I, I worked in jails, and we used to make those kind of calls. You make the wrong call, and I guess, like they say, you can get your checkbook out and see how many zeros you need to put on the end. But there is an agey opinion that's saying that the sheriff is responsible for those duties. Because I, you know, I, you know, I have the same things that you guys hear when I'm out there. Gee sheriff, just stuff them in the jail, you know they're guilty, feed them bread and water, don't do anything for their healthcare, don't do this. It sounds well and good when you're making those type of statements, but, you know, I've always said this, and I still say it. This is the greatest country in the world, this is the United States of America, you're not guilty until you're proven guilty by people, your own peers or by a judge. So if it was Russia, maybe you could do those kind of things, and nobody would care about you. But this is one good thing here. Do I think that these people are all not guilty that are sitting in that jail? Definitely not. In my opinion, ninety-nine point nine percent of mine are guilty, but they still have to go through the processes, and that's the good thing about this country. We've already touched on the vehicles. I can tell you, I got, we used to have a vehicle maintenance coordinator and a vehicle maintenance worker. We're down just to a vehicle maintenance worker right now, and he's responsible for our entire fleet. And I can tell you, this guy does an excellent job for us. You know, he'll rob parts off of one older car and put them on, and he's kept our fleet. And the captain could attest to that, because I actually have him in charge of the fleet and the mechanics. And I think, you know, this Grant Coben Nelson who works for us has done an excellent job.
I agree, I agree.
Moving on to the jail budget. And I have attachments there that you can also look at. I do have a copy of the general fund there for the four point eight million, and I have a copy.
The only question I see is the, is travel request for forty-seven thousand, is that travel reimbursement, or what kind of travel are we talking about?
What that is, is when I was talking about those expeditions where we go pick those inmates up, that's the money we pay them.
Okay. Do you normally spend that kind of money on extraditions though?
No. We usually turn money back in at the end of the year. That's one of those mandated things that.
But you have to have it there?
It's half of the sheriff's salary goes into that account.
Okay.
And technically on that one, if I did spend that all, I could come back to you, and legally, you have to reimburse that money. We, I don't come back to you anymore. I think maybe when Mahoney was there ten years ago, they used all the money up one year. But we're really watching the costs on that, and that was one thing that I think that you can privatize to help you out. Years ago, there was Attorney General's opinion that sheriff was not allowed to privatize that. You could not pass your authority from yourself to a private company to say, go pick this inmate. Because what had happened is if he escaped, you bring him back from Florida, they stop over in Tennessee, this guy escapes, he kills somebody. There used to be a thing, well sheriff, you were responsible for that, now you let this guy bring this guy back, and he ended up, now the laws.
I think I saw that movie.
Yeah, the laws have changed on that now, where these companies are responsible. Responsibility goes, falls onto them. So, but we still got to make sure they get these guys back, but those are the contracted ones that we watch the prices on. And when you think about it, it is a little bit cheaper sometimes to use those guys instead of my own because if I send my own officers, you got to pay for the rooms that night where they're staying at, you got to pay for the flights there, you got to pay for the flight back, you got to pay for meals. So to pay a ballpark figure, maybe thirteen hundred dollars to bring a prisoner back from California, that's not really a bad price, when you look at things.
Versus losing, loss of service of those deputies.
Exactly, you're losing two officers on top, that's correct, Commissioner. As far as the jail budget, in two thousand and ten, you know, I was running kind of tight there with my jail budget. I also laid off one captain there and one secretary that was paid out of the jail funds. I used to have a hundred and three corrections officers, I'm down to ninety-eight right now. And this, this group, conversations with Lieutenant Hammond in the jail, with the officers back there, that, you know, as we lost these guys, I had told him at the time, do we really need to replace them right now, Lieutenant? And he said, no. So we went down to ninety-eight, and I can tell you, we, we cannot go down any lower than that because it does cause safety issues after that. There's times when we're tight right now because of summer months and vacations, and like you say, the older people get, the more benefits they get, the more time they get off and in. But one thing I tell you, the Corrections Union has cooperated with us fully on this, they know what the economic conditions are. Obviously, they want to keep their job and keep working. They've, we used to have a minimum manpower in jail. It was like twenty-four guys on days and, I don't know, in the afternoon.
Went by each day.
Right.
Depending on the day.
That's gone. We, we knew when this thing happened, we told, went to the union and says, hey, look guys, we can no longer say, hey, you got twenty-four people and two call off for whatever reasons, sick or whatever, now we replace those two on overtime. Not going to happen. You know, if you, you know, you might have to police your own union, your own people to say, you got to come to work. I'm not telling people they got to come to work when they're really ill, but I look at all the sick forms, and I see the headaches, the stomach aches, the diarrhea, you name it. I think I'm a normal human being, and I, I pretty much try to come to work every single day. These guys, since I've been sheriff for eleven years, I don't believe I've taken two weeks' vacations since I've been there. And I think these guys can attest to that. But maybe I'm a little bit different than some people. You know, and I'm not in a union, and I guess I don't have certain benefits, but all I expect them to, and we got people that have illnesses just like anybody else does. They have cancer, they have heart problems, they have children with problems. I have no problems with that. It's the guy that calls off ten or twelve days a year with the headaches, the diarrhea.
Always on Fridays.
In conjunction with his days off, those are the guys that I zero in on, and these guys will zero in on. And we don't have a whole lot of them, and obviously, in tough times, you can't have any of those. I did have a lieutenant retire a few years back, we have not replaced him. One thing about the jail, as you know, that was built in nineteen seventy-seven, that building's thirty-four years old. The newer part opened up in ninety-eight, it's not quite as old, but we even have things that are breaking down in there. After about ten years, you start having breakdowns. But we have eleven pods in that jail. And if you build a newer jail, I can tell you, you can build it a lot better. And as you know, Lieutenant can espound on this, but they're building newer jails now where they're called indirect supervision, where you can do a lot of things on camera. We're pretty much labor-intensive jail. It's a direct supervision jail, and what I mean by that is our corrections officers are right into the pods with these inmates, supervising. You have a control room booth that watches that guy because as one guy takes a break, then the other guy's got to watch both sides, and this guy has his eyes and ears in protection in case the inmates would try to jump him. But the modern jails now are built a lot different, and unfortunately, we're stuck with what we got.
Back when we had the jail study, and they said a lot of our problems were systematic issues. Did we get past a lot of those system issues to move people through the process faster? Is that why our jail numbers seem to be down compared to what they were?
Yeah, the jail expediter that they hired.
Yes, and I did have that in.
That was a big part of.
Sue Smig is a jail expediter, correct?
When we go to Colorado, I have a O-six, and they gave us all those statistics, and we said, huh?
It's helped. It's helped the system. That's helped bring our numbers down some, but also, less police officers on the street has contributed to bringing ours down. But now what we're seeing now is that kind of leveled out, find its watermark, and we're moving back up. Now, the last three months, our average daily population was three hundred and ninety-six. That's, that's an increase over that period of last year, so we're seeing the populations start to hedge back up.
Record twenty-two is still our bed number, correct?
That's what we're approved.
Yes, we're approved a waiver.
We exceed it.
I mean, Casey Anthony was a big story, and just knowing that she was sat in jail for three years before she even went to trial, it just seems like such a long time.
She got one sitting there for four years.
Yeah.
Just having anniversary last month.
Wow.
Four years, she's waiting.
And they haven't gone to trial?
No adjudication, has there been?
That's, you know, that's insane. I mean, we, how much has that person cost us? A hundred dollars a day?
Hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's about ninety-two bucks a day.
See, I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing we really need to try to figure out how to do better. And I mean, that's not your department so much as it is the system.
There's fewer of those now.
There used to have a bunch of them.
That court expediter has helped though. I mean, the simple thing about it is inmates, obviously, you know, they've had issues. They either got drug or alcohol problems, or a combination of both. They got issues, there's no doubt about it. Sometimes just a phone call to them and say, hey, you've got court tomorrow at nine o'clock. Oh, okay, yeah, I kind of forgot about that. It'll make them show up. What helps out there is, obviously, if they don't show up, the judge puts a warrant out for them. Now, we got another warrant, now we got to go out and look for this guy, pick him up, bring him back to jail. So a simple little thing like that as a reminder has worked out tremendously. And we found this out in other areas. I give Bart Hobart credit because he's actually the one that went out and got the grant to have that employee be at our place, so that's worked out really good for us. So that's worked out really good for us.
Where do you think the majority of your warrants go as far as in the areas? Being sheriff of Lorraine, Alaria. Well, obviously the biggest area.
Yeah, the biggest areas have big cities, but it's pretty diversified all over. But a lot of part of the cities.
Well, it's been about a year since we looked at it, but ninety-five percent, we took a snapshot one day, ninety-five percent of our population was wearing more injury.
If I, if I can get through those commissioners, I'm not trying to stop you from asking questions, but I think as I go down, I'll answer some of those questions for you. The jail staff, I can tell you, and I give Lieutenant Hammond and his staff crediting with the nurses and everybody. In two thousand and eight, our budget was about, well, it wasn't about, it was. It was twelve million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents. And Lisa's got those figures, I know. But in the last three years, I can tell you, through cutting the overtime supplies and watching everything, we've cut off about seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars if we'd have kept at that same budget. And obviously, we weren't out spending a bunch of money, I can just tell you that. You know, the problem was, and as you know, nothing ever gets cheaper. Gasoline never gets cheaper, supplies never get cheaper. No matter what you're talking about, the food, everything never gets cheaper. It always goes up, even if it's pennies. And the pennies turn into dollars, which turns into thousands of dollars. But I give him credit for cutting about three quarter of a million dollars off of that. And then our budget in two thousand and ten came in under twelve million. It was eleven million, eight hundred and eighty-nine, three sixty-one, thirty-one. And as you know, the state legislators and the governor, you know, they passed House Bill eighty-six, which is criminal sentencing law. And that's fine and dandy. But once again, the sheriffs have looked at this issue and I look at it as they're taking the monkey off their back and putting it on everybody else's, which is going to be the counties. These state prisons are going to release their F fours and F fives, which are about ten thousand inmates, which is gonna, yeah, help them out a little bit. As the people serve eighty percent of their sentences, their, their opinion, they can cut them loose. They've given the director of the DRC a lot of power where he can even start cutting inmates loose. Where a judge used to have to issue that order, now he can let some of them loose. So they're gonna end up, and I can tell you, they're gonna end up in the CBCFs, our community based correction facilities. And they're already crowded and they have problems. And anytime anything happens at the CBF, we get called over there to handle. They have an inmate that is out on a work floor, a work release, doesn't show back up. They call the sheriff about going looking for this guy. That is one of our responsibilities. They're gonna be placed on parole, they're gonna be placed on probation. There's not enough probation officers and parole officers to go around now. They're probably already supervising a hundred and fifty people, which they're gonna add to their roles. And in the sheriff's opinion, and I, and you mock my words, if we go on, these people are gonna show up in the county jails. Throughout the state. You know, this isn't just Lorraine County, we're not gonna have ten thousand inmates, but they're gonna show up in the county jails and we're gonna be stuck with more of those type of issues. And this is, I know the same argument that you've had. It's okay to pass these kind of laws and sign these kind of laws in effect, but what type of trickle effect do you cause in other agencies monetarily? And it's the old mandate, but you know, here's your mandate, you gotta do it. But no, guess what, we don't have any money to help you do that with. And that, that's what, as you know, has been going on for a while. Senate Bill seventy-seven is another one. That's where you do the DNA collection on every inmate. The old law they passed a few years ago, which I thought was a good law, is was everybody that's convicted of felony, you had to swab them. They had to be convicted first. Now the law says anybody sheriff that's arrested for a felony, you have to swab them. And once again, this is a procedure that we're gonna have to do in our booking area or the officer's gonna have to do it out on the street where you swab them and you swab them in their mouth and you have to take a fingerprint of them also. Then this gets sent down to BCI. That's probably added at least ten minutes to the booking process?
Okay.
And here it is again, here's another job for you, which probably good to have that DNA collection because if any of these guys ever throw another crime and you get some DNA from them in a burglary or rape or whatever, you can match that up to that guy. Problem is, there's no money to go with it. And here we got more work and no more money. And as you know, the jail overcrowding has not been real bad the last two years. But I predict because of this House Bill eighty-six and things that are going on, they're gonna fill, slowly, they're slowly filling back up again. And we're, you know, and I think there's a lot of reasons, like Lieutenant had said, you know, you got a lot of police that through attrition, they have not replaced in Lorraine, Alaria or whatever. I think there's, the police are frustrated when the jails were overcrowded. They would come to us and we'd kind of tell them, hey, you know, please not bring these guys and this and that. So there, now there's someone's and a lot more people, so there's less of them, making less arrests. And I don't believe everybody should go to jail, but I can tell you, there's some people that belong in jail. There's no doubt about it, the very violent ones. And we're living unfortunately in a violent society right now, as you see between Lorraine, Alaria and what's going on. And there's just a lot of violent criminals out there right now. We're, we're pretty much a jail that holds people that are waiting for trial. We don't have a whole lot of sentenced people. We're actually becoming almost an all felon jail. And at some point, I probably, you see that coming down the line.
We're about seventy percent felon.
And I know the commissioners have asked me, gee sheriff, can't you just let some of these people out of jail? Or can't you say there's no room at the end? And once again, I've asked the county prosecutor for an opinion on that, which, which was in two thousand and six when we were up to five hundred and fifty-four inmates at that point. The captain was in charge at the time and he's pulling his hair out, there's bloody all over the floor and, you know, he's telling police departments, don't bring them at this time, don't bring them here. I asked the prosecutor, hey, can we close the place down? He sent me back a letter and says, guess what sheriff, you don't have that authority. You cannot close a jail. If somebody shows up at your jail with an inmate, you have to accept them and that's by law. And I had that opinion in that package with you.
But we do have the ability though to, with a judge's order and agreement, what happened in ninety-four, ninety-five, the revolving door policy?
If you have a federal court decree, then you can do it.
It's a federal court.
Correct. The judges, the county judges really cannot even make up an order that's really legal.
And what does a federal?
Federal court decree says that. Usually when you do that, you're getting sued in federal court, is usually what happens. And then the federal judge has the authority to say, sheriff, you're not holding any more than four hundred and twenty-two inmates. He also has the authority to say, sheriff, I'm putting this guy in charge of your jail. And whatever he needs, the county commissioners will give him. And that's, none of us want that.
Kind of like an emergency watch situation.
It's like you know what the AP doing yourself at waste point?
Yeah.
Yeah, getting into sexual offenders, as you know, in Lorraine County, we got six hundred and ninety of those. And this is what my record room does and I can tell you, they, they track and register all these sexual offenders. And they're all different. As I can tell you, the laws have changed on that too. And you know, the, prior to two thousand, January two thousand and eight, there was a law called Megan's Law. And that was when you had sexual predators, habitual sex offenders and sexually oriented offenders. They were either categorized by, this is after they've already served their time and the judge is labeling this at a hearing. And then what we gotta do is obviously the predators were tracked, registered every ninety days. The other ones were every hundred and eighty days and then they're on it for twenty years or ten years. Predators were on it for life. Well, prior, after January first, two thousand and eight, a new law came into effect called Adam Walsh Act, which changed everything. And that was tier one, two and three. But it's about the same, one's a predator, one's a habitual sex offender, but they call them tier one, two and three. As you know, these inmates, some of them committed their crimes prior to two thousand and eight, got sentenced in two thousand and nine. This is where the court cases ended up in the Supreme Court and said, how can you convict me under Adam Walsh when I actually committed my crime under Megan's Law? So that got muddy up in the courts and it's still, the Supreme Court has said, anybody prior to two thousand and eight is Megan's Law. Anybody after two thousand and eight is Adam Walsh. So now we have two separate things that we have to track. We have to do the Megan's Law and the Adam Walsh. My record room does that. And you talk about a nightmare, when you're dealing with six hundred and ninety of them, it, it's a nightmare. But they, they do an excellent job over there. Warrants, just a couple of weeks ago, I checked, we had two thousand four hundred and eighty-five warrants. That are, you know, once again, are processed through our record room, the interim, as they're served, they take them out. I have two deputies that are out there trying to serve these. And as you know, the problem we have is as you serve ten warrants, fifteen or twenty are coming over from the grand jury, from other courts, from other things. So it's a never ending game of, okay, you served fifty, now you got fifty. So it just kind of, we stay consistent, probably about twenty-four, twenty-five hundred warrants. One thing a sheriff must do, it's in the law, any policeman can arrest anybody for a warrant or for even a secret indictment. What a sheriff deputy must do is actually serve the secret indictment on the defendant. A policeman from Lorraine, Alaria, even when they have a homicide in Lorraine and they get indicted through the grand jury, my deputies have to serve that secret indictment on that person. A Lorraine cop does not have that authority to do it. That's just the way the laws are written.
Could you deputize all the policemen in the county to do that?
Would you want to?
No. Since two thousand and four, as you know, the carry and conceal law went into effect. We processed six thousand one hundred and eighty-six CCW permits. And on each one of those, you know, it takes them a while to get it because you have to do a background investigation on each one of these people to make sure, you know, they haven't been, you know, adjudicated mentally ill or they have certain violations for domestic violence or whatever. So we have to run all those checks.
How's your timeline there?
Uh, we've been doing pretty good. I mean, you know, the.
Couple of weeks turnaround.
Yeah, about a couple of weeks.
Any other counties doing better that we can recommend us go to?
No, they come to us.
Yeah. Yeah, I think some of them are, Cuyahoga's flooded with them, so you could go to any contiguous county around.
Right.
And that's one thing, some people go to Erie County, some people go to Huron, some people come to us. And then you got Medina and you got Cuyahoga, so, but it depends. Also, once they violate a law, if you get arrested for domestic violence, now we have to notify through leads that, hey, this person had a CCW license sheriff, now you gotta revoke it from them. So we get notified. Now we gotta send a letter to that person and say, hand your license in, you no longer have a CCW. Once your case is adjudicated, if you're found not guilty, you'll get it back. Until then, you need to give us your license. Well, they're not always, you know, cooperating with you. So if they don't hand it in, now I gotta have a deputy go out and track them down and get that license from them. So it's, it's just, that's another thing that you just gotta worry about. As you know, the record room's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I got total to run that whole operation, I got eleven typists, one corporal and one sergeant that oversee that. Now that's not their only duties, is the sex offenders and the CCW. They're, they're also dealing with any type of reports that the deputies do. They have to process all those, any type of warrants that come in, they're processing those. Public records requests from the media or whoever, from the public, they're processing that. So they have a multitude of duties that they're doing. Inmates are coming in, family members for visitation. They do that, so they do have a lot of public contact. For my jail budget, what I proposed to you in there is twelve million, one hundred and fourteen thousand. And I can tell you that we've cut that down from what we originally, because, you know, I told them, hey, don't, don't, don't give me a budget of thirteen million, ten with respect, you go to commissioners and ask them for it, it's not happening.
And you have a quarter percent levy that goes towards that, so you get about seven.
Yeah.
Seven million and we pick up, the general fund has to pay the rest.
Correct. And as Lisa says, I did not come over with a wish list. This is, this is actual things that are, that are gonna be needed.
And last year's budget was what, do you have that?
Yes, it was eleven million, eight eighty-nine.
You're talking jail facility fund, right?
Yes, I'm talking to jail.
What was it last year?
Eleven million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one point thirty-one. And the reason that it went up a little bit, I can tell you, is none of my people have gotten any raises at the sheriff's office, I can tell you that. Since these contracts are going into effect, as you know, we're trying to get three-year contracts, no raises, no increases in anything. We've signed off on a couple of those already. But I can't control healthcare increases. I can't control longevity payments that go up for employees that have more years there. Medical drug supplies. I can tell you one thing that has saved us probably hundreds of thousands of dollars is Charlie Neff from the mental health board has helped us with some of his funding to pay for some of these psychotropic drugs for these inmates that we got in there with mental health issues. He's probably saved us.
Fifty thousand bucks in the first six months.
Yeah, at least, and, and not more. So that, that's money that he paid out of his accounts that we did not have to come back and pay it out of the jail account, which has helped us immensely. But those things go up. The gasoline part of it, I, I know I can't control that, neither can you. I'm hoping it keeps coming down like it was, but I don't know if it's ever gonna get back down to two dollars a gallon, but as we know, it was close to four.
The budget you gave us was twelve five, so what you said here, twelve one?
Uh, twelve one, twelve one fourteen.
Am I looking at this right here?
You had an older version in there.
Yeah, that's an older, I, I updated this, this is what I.
Okay.
And you have a new copy of, not the line item things in there, but a breakdown of what my fiscal people have done, I think it's in that package.
Just in this thick package here?
Yes, that's it. There's one for the jail, there's one for the general fund. As you know, we're also talking to Alaria right now. Alaria, I talked to Chief Whitley. You know, their jail's sitting over there empty, which is a modern jail, which is an excellent facility. Lieutenant Hammond went over just about a month ago and I think went through it. We're thinking about trying to take our female inmates, transform from our area over, which the female area is not conducive to any type of programs. You wouldn't want to expand one more area?
There's just no ability to classify the female population by the standards that the states set. We, we make it through it. I mean, we have situations that are kind of touchy, but we handle it. For example, we have a special needs area for the mentally ill for males, which is forced upon us by the state reductions. We can't duplicate that in a female town. Quite frankly, frankly, I'm surprised that we haven't been sued because we're not offering that same service to that female population. The Alaria jail solves all those problems.
How many females we normally have on custody, what's the average?
Uh, fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah, about fifty. And I think that can hold Alaria with a fifty.
Fifty-six.
Sixty-six. And what that'll free up is male beds for us, obviously, that we can put them in. And the argument is no matter what, if you have five hundred and fifty-four inmates and you stuff them all over the floor or if you have the extra room where you're putting them, you're feeding them all anyways and you're taking care of those issues anyways. We're not talking about putting on any more personnel to do any of these jobs.
And the trade-off to Alaria was what?
The trade-off to Alaria was that we not charging for the municipal ordinance cases, which I think they brought in.
Fifteen thousand?
Yes, less than fifteen thousand a year.
And that, I would do their DNA swaps form at the booking process, which we don't have to do in any of these.
Are we, are we close to an agreement with Alaria on that?
Uh, actually, I wanted to get by this stuff with you guys first in the nine-one-one and then try to deal with that issue afterwards. I've had a few on my plate here, but.
It doesn't seem to, sheriff?
But, no, Chief Whitley actually called me last week and I told him, hey, once I get by my budget hearing and things of that over there, I'd like to meet with you. Cause he did talk to like nine of his eleven council people and they, they think it's a good idea. I know I've talked to all three of you and you think it's a decent idea, so I think it could be a good thing for everybody. And they're willing to pay the maintenance fees and things for that.
Now we won't have to have an additional psychiatrist?
No.
Shared resource.
Nope, we're not adding anything like that.
Even if we're taking fifty more people over there, the same amount of corrections officers?
Yep.
Even if you reload the bed zirks, you're gonna take some people out of this jail, right?
That's correct. It'd be the females though, that, you know, the matrons obviously guard the female, the little guys.
You're saying if we fill all the new available beds?
Right.
Well, it's gonna work without any increase.
So we'll be able to keep fifty more bodies approximately in our current jail facility?
Correct.
With so more bodies, so we're gonna raise our bed count to four hundred and seventy-two now basically with two.
But you don't have a, a ratio inmate to.
State recommends it, but there's no.
Mandated.
There's no mandated number?
Actually, we're pretty, we're pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can handle that. I wouldn't even came forward with this proposal if the proposal was, hey, let's hire ten more COs. Not gonna happen. So let's not even bring that to the commissioners and I, I knew that.
We agree with you.
Yeah, well, and I, and I agree with you on that too, I would not disagree. As the commissioner mentioned, we do have a quarter percent sales tax, which you know, passed in ninety-five, dedicated just to the jail. And you're right, on a, on a good year, it's bringing in probably seven and a half million to, it could bring in eight million. You are supplementing that fund, as you know, if, if, if we're talking in the border of twelve million dollars, you're supplementing about four million or a little bit less than that. I gave you a listing of the former employees that I had as of December two thousand and eight, prior to any of the cuts. Back then, I had two hundred and fifty-nine employees. After the cuts, I presently have two hundred and thirty-one. So I'm down twenty-eight employees, which I figured out to be about a ten point eight percent cut. And, and we're maintaining it right now. And that's, you know, I'm not saying that we don't need my people, we do, but, you know, we're surviving. The drug task force, which Chief Deputy Kavanaugh oversees, as you know, that's a separate funding that comes in on a levy. Unfortunately, his money's coming in at a nineteen.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two millage, which even Mark Stewart had seen me one day and he goes, I don't know how you're surviving on that, that type of millage. But he has twelve employees over there. I call him Houdini over there because he, he's a tightwad like I am, I can tell you, and I hear it from his employees all the time. But he does go out and look for grants and he, I tell you, he's a good grant writer and he's gotten several grants that has paid a lot of employees. Actually, he even got one where they're paying a prosecutor, so. Because as the drug cases increase from his process, it increases the prosecutor's process. So we have got a combination grant where it paid for an agent and a prosecutor. So that, that's really.
Two years.
Training wise, as you know, that's a very important aspect of any sheriff's office or any police department. or any police department. You have to train your employees, otherwise you have a huge liability. We used to shoot four times a year, and now I think we're only down to one.
One, two.
And that's okay, because we make it like an eight-hour day. We're surviving on that. We're meeting the state mandates. But I use my FOJ funds to do the training. I've never, never had a training budget, never come back and asked for one, so we use those type of funds to do that. Also, you've heard me state before, and I'm, I guess I'm gonna state it again, is that we're 24 hours, seven days a week, and even with that building, when you talk about that jail, you know, our building actually ages three days to the one of a normal building that's eight hours. Because things are constantly running, whether it's heating, air conditioning, the way that thing was built, in my opinion.
It's a mile off a west coast jail.
Yeah, it, it's for a better climate. We have these rooftop units, which to me are the worst thing you can have. And as you know, that they go out constantly, and then you gotta get a hoist to lift them up onto the roof, and they're not cheap to replace. And unfortunately, because of this building you built in 77, we're having a lot of that going on.
If those units were replaced 10 years ago, but they've reached their life cycle, so it's costing us $5,000 a pot for every compressor that goes out, and that's where it's at. The warranties are up, so guess what?
And one thing-
You make them to last as long as the warranty.
I can tell you, my bill, my building maintenance foreman, Bill Vargo, that guy is another one that I tell you, he's an amazing employee. He'll watch a contractor do a job, and then he'll do it himself next time. He won't even call the guy. And he's pretty slick, I tell you, but he saves money where he can, and I tell you, he's talking about retiring, and I'm trying to talk him out of it, but, you know, if you lose a guy like that, then it really hurts. One thing you know, too, that I just wanna note, the projected cost that I have given you does not include any anticipated retirements. And I, I can tell you right now, I probably have two sergeants in the jail that are gonna be retiring pretty soon. And as you know, with the bargaining agreements, you know, they have the right to sell back their vacation time, their sick leave, and, you know, they accumulate these times, they don't use them, I can't force them to use them. But when they leave and get paid out, sometimes those are some pretty good payouts. You know, and I know the public thinks they didn't earn them, but, you know, I look at it this way, the guy that came to work every day and was dedicated and did his job, I think he oughta be rewarded when he leaves to some aspect. Because I got people there with 25 years that probably have zero sick time, that they figure, and I know what they're thinking, is gee, if something happens to me tomorrow and I drop dead, I haven't left anything, I didn't waste anything, and give it back to the county or the city. I've heard people say that, and I just kinda, I say, well, what about when you really get sick and you need that time? Or your family member does, now you don't have them. So, but tho- those are things you can anticipate, and as you know, there's a fund for the general fund, but there is no fund for the jail. So when somebody leaves in the jail, that money comes out of the jail funding, which could leave me short. So I don't, you know, this is gonna be a problem, I'm gonna have-
We'll have our global account?
Next year-
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a few next year.
Yeah. Sergeant Tomusko's gonna be leaving?
Yes, yeah. And he comes to work religiously every day, so his, his account's a full. He doesn't abuse his body.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let you know that, as you know, you can't budget something like that. It's just, it's a guesstimate, and I don't know when these people are gonna leave. And once again, as you know, I had five unions, but I guess now I just passed one of them to you. Somehow, I have four now, so the communications officers are no longer there. But you still have to honor contracts, which are binding on us, because as we know, if we don't uphold those, then they can file grievances and win them, and we waste money in trying to fight those type of things. Once again, I wanna put it under my budget, it's not a wish list, it's actual. I will control costs where I can, along with the people that are here at this table. One thing that we do, I think, as a sheriff's office, and we're different than, you know, Joe Theroux was here from the union and guys at the Ford, they make products. What we do is provide a product through service, through people. So our product is, you gotta have people to provide those services, and I think you know that already. That's how we get our jobs done. And I'm not just talking sheriff's office, I'm talking the county as a whole. But sometimes I think people forget that, that we provide a service to people. And when you don't have, I've always said the same thing, and I've felt this way myself personally, I don't wanna pay any more taxes than the next guy, and neither does anybody else, I think. But I do wanna have, when I pick the phone up and call for a policeman, or I call for the fire department, I do like to have them show up. So I like to argue with people saying, well, it's, it's good to cut when you can and tighten things up, that's all understandable. But what do you tell people when you've cut so bad that, hey, guess what? We're not sending anybody to your house. I mean, I got a phone call last week from a guy, hey sheriff, how come nobody's followed up on my burglary from a year ago? And I told him, well, you know, sorry, but it didn't make the list where we got more priority calls ahead of yours at this point. And that's hard to tell somebody that, because, you know, until you get your home broken into, or until you have a problem with your house, you don't care what the police are doing, or you don't care about the other guy. And I'm not trying to be heartless, but once it happens to you or one of your family members, then it's a completely different ballgame. I want you here, and I want you here right now. I don't wanna wait. And I've heard that from I don't know how many people, and they, sometimes they don't understand. I've never minded paying as long as I thought I was getting the service. And I think that's a message that we gotta get out to the public. If we keep cutting, and these things keep going down, and we don't find the funding to do our jobs, you are not gonna have any services. And when it does happen to you, you're gonna be wondering, boy, what's going on here? I wish I would've paid maybe a quarter percent more. But, you know, that's Phil Stemedie talking, that's my opinion. But one thing I do wanna do, and I, I wanna invite all three commissioners in the county administration, you know, he's sitting back there. He's, he's been out, I'd like you to come out one day and work one day, one shift with the corrections officers in the jail, and I'm inviting you out, or come out and ride one shift with a deputy. I think only at that, that point are you gonna be able to really grasp what these guys are really doing out there. And you'll see the downtime, and you'll see the uptime. And I always said, it always evens out. There's days that my guys run from call to call, they don't even get a lunch break. And there's days, maybe, where you only get a couple of calls. But the norm is anymore that you're running from call to call. And I know it's been suggested, and I'm open to it, if the commissioners would like to do a performance audit through the state or the sheriff's office, send them my way. They can tell me how to do a better job at something, or I can save money here. But I think they're also gonna look at the entire operations, and let's get compared, like you brought up, Commissioner, let's get compared to other counties, to comparables. I'm willing to look at that. If they tell me, hey sheriff, I think you got maybe one or two more people over here that you shouldn't have, I'll look at it. But also, you gotta remember, if they say, hey, guess what, Sheriff, you probably should have five or six more over here, that we have to look at that, too. You just can't pick and choose and cherry pick where you wanna go.
Well, they turned this down.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because the state auditor actually was just out, the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association, Mr. Yost, last week.
Well, she was at the fair breakfast, too.
Yeah, this was the actual state auditor.
It was actually Yost at Buckeye Sheriff's.
Oh.
Yeah, and he was talking about performance audits, and I had mentioned him, oh yeah, that came up, you know, we had some of your people at, you know, one of our commissioners meetings.
You mean that, that was the CCOS?
Okay.
Yeah, we had that speech.
Yeah. And, and I guess I don't wanna expound how much more, Commissioner, I think you know what the issues are, and you, and you know what the problems are, and, yeah. I'm not the most important department in the whole county, I'm not saying that. Do I think we're very important? Yes. I, I think we provide a, a service to the citizens that is truly needed, and I, I think you believe that, too. I think it'd be irresponsible, and I've talked to Larry Long, for any commissioner or anybody to come out and say, guess what, the sheriff does not need any deputies. I don't think anybody would ever say that, but I guess you can argue about the number that you're gonna have.
I think the issue is not whether you need them or not, Sheriff, it's a matter of who's paying for them.
Yeah.
Concerns, it doesn't-
Exactly. And as you know, I've, I've said this to the cities, when I've talked to the rotaries and the Lions Clubs or whoever, that, you know, that when you call a policeman in Lorain, or you call a policeman in Ovaland or Amherst or Elyria or Avon Lake, yeah, we're not showing up at your house when you call. But we are in your town, serving these warrants, checking on your sexual offenders, your people are in our jails, and, yeah, they pay some of the sales tax, too, but believe me, they get their share of money. And really, the townships do kinda have an argument, as you know. They pretty much don't use a lot of those services, but, you know, once, once we get somebody, yeah, you're gonna arrest them and put them in our jail, but they pretty much get a law enforcement presence from sheriff. That's what they get in the townships. I'm done, Commissioners, if you got any questions, I'm gonna answer it, or you got these guys here that can expound on anything.
Well, you're not gonna be available next one, sir. Can anybody come from your office?
I'll see if I can have somebody come over.
I know we have, but we sent you to buy it here, though, I mean, to know where we're gonna do to come up with the-
I'll make sure somebody's here.
What the plan is, I'm sure you've been following it, is, you know, work out a budget. We pass the sales tax and keep par, and then a budget also, if it doesn't pass, and we're gonna go to them, what services are gonna be discontinued at county levels.
And I know the local government fundings are cut, that's a, that's a big one, and that's what I've always argued with the state. It's, it's okay, you get the money sent down to you, but you don't wanna send it-
Don't turn back, Chris, now you just think more of it. I mean, we had to redo a few years back, and the population shifted from the townships to the cities. We lost three and a half million, and now they're choosing to take another three million plus over the next two years from us, so I mean, we don't have much of a choice. Our mandate is to find a balanced budget. So when you come up with those numbers, we're gonna be, everybody working, what are we gonna breed to not do anymore? I mean, there's gotta be certain things in every department that we just don't have to do, or we just take the slap for not doing it. You know, it wouldn't be the first time that we were, you know, got a citation for, for not doing our job. That's why I brought up the revolving door policy again. What it would take if one pod, if it's 30 people in a pod, and you give it one corrections officer, and 30 dinners a day, 30 breakfasts, 30 lunches, what savings are there? You know, what is that process?
As you know, we've, through the years, I, I think Aaron Martin did an excellent job.
Did a great job. I mean, I'm not arguing, bringing prices down, I'm gonna argue that, but where are we at now?
Right.
To get to our-
But I can tell you, back in 1980s, we're paying a buck eighty a year. This was 1980s.
That was a buck eighteen.
Yeah.
I was thinking, we, we cut coffee for our employees, and that, what if we-
They don't have coffee.
They don't have coffee?
They want to buy it off the commissary.
Franklin County just got theirs down to 86 cents. I read the Home Dispatch a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, but they get-
That's because of the volume of inmates.
Oh, the volume.
The more you have, the cheaper it gets to feed them. The less you have-
And we have that built into the contract. If our count keeps going up, then our, our price comes down.
Yeah.
They don't have coffee, do they?
If they wanna buy it, with their own money on the commissary, they can have it all by themselves.
Our employees don't eat out there either. They, they want their meal, they buy it.
We don't give our employees coffee. They'll buy their own.
Right. Well, that's what I was thinking. Our employees don't get coffee.
They gotta buy their own.
They gotta buy any bar.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you.
Make a motion to go into executive session, not only by the administrator and the county prosecutor.
Mr. Cam?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. copy of the agenda.